Hey Marquis, can you hear me?
Yes, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. How are you today?
I'm well.
Good. Alright, I'll put myself on mute and wait for other people to get on.
Hey Amy, can you hear me?
I can. Have you started the Zoom meeting in the chamber yet?
You mean the Granicus?
The CC laptop?
It's, it's in there. It's not on the big screen yet though, but I've just... I don't know why.
Yeah, I'm not sa- I mean, I see the Granicus is, the live manager is running. I don't see the Zoom from the CC laptop. I only see the seal. I miss like it's on a, it's looking at a second screen or something?
Is the seal, is that y'all doing the seal right there?
Did you see the Zoom on?
I think they're, I think they're working on it.
In the room?
I see, I see the seal in the room. It's like it's a two, yeah, they just said it's like it's a two monitor. Thing, but they're working on it.
Somebody must have changed the settings. I'm going to get the meeting.
It's looking like it's not connected to the sound either on this.
Hello, everybody. Pam, where are you?
I am at the beach.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, welcome back from Scotland.
Oh, thank you.
I want to hear about it. I'm so glad.
It was, we had to set a really, really fun time.
Oh, good.
Ladies kept telling us, oh, this is typical Scottish weather. Aren't you lucky as we're dripping? But it really didn't stop us. There was one day where it kind of, we were thinking about hiking and we didn't because it just was like 30 mile an hour winds and cold. A little rain.
Scottish weather.
Yeah, a little rain I'm okay with, but, and we, the day before we had gone out to see some puffins. And it was a cra- it was like a carnival ride. They couldn't stop at one of the islands because it was so rough out and oh, it was, it was nuts. I mean, I was sitting in the, and I usually get seasick, which I did not, so I was very grateful. But I'm sitting in the back, it's like 38 degrees out, packets of spray are hitting me in the face. I'm looking over the side of the boat. I can't see anything because there's water over my head. It was, it was nuts, but the puffins were amazingly cute.
No, I bet they were.
And they let you get real close. They're not shy, so.
Oh, wow.
I mean, you could get like 10, 15 feet away from them and they would just do their thing.
Oh, how funny. Oh, they're such pretty birds.
Yeah, the guy said it's partly because they, that scares away the predator birds, so they're kind of happy to have humans around.
Okay.
Never works.
Cool, sorry, scanning through. My phone keeps blowing up today, so.
Uh oh, yeah, now I've noticed.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
How you doing, Mike?
I'm well, thanks, and yourself?
Good.
I don't think, oh, we're still early. I got on early, okay.
Good afternoon, Ray, how are you?
I'm good. I'm here at the beach with 23 of my husband's closest relatives and a screamer, so it's fun.
Okay.
Is Beckett there?
Relaxing some. Yes, Beckett's here. He's adorable. He's not a screamer. He's a, he's having a ball. He's taking very long naps because wearing him out, but yeah, too funny.
Works for everybody.
Marquis, good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good, you see me, now you don't.
And hello, Mary, Amy, and Lauren.
Hello, Marquis.
Hi, Marquis.
Hi.
Good, everybody.
Oh, this Amy. Got too many, three Amys on this call.
We may be short a couple of council members this evening due to COVID. Yeah.
Karen, Karen was looking uncomfortable this morning, I have to say.
I mean, Jesus, it's just a mess.
Yeah.
I mean, this whole thing, I mean, you know, we are this, you know, not globally, not just nationally. You know, public policy is now based on wishful thinking. You know, I wanted to go over.
I'm surprised we have that after a few years. Yeah.
I saw somewhere, cases today are about, or like in the last week or so, are about six times what they were a year ago.
Hospitalizations are down, right?
Yeah, and so are deaths. Yeah, I mean, that's the good news.
No, actually, hospitalizations are climbing again, unfortunately.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
In Chapel Hill or just all over?
Just all over. It's mostly older folks and unvaccinated folks, but they are climbing back up again.
Interesting correlation there.
No, really? Yeah.
Well, to Michael's point, during the pandemic, there was a country song released called Wishful Drinking. Hot Country 100. Just want to throw that out there for folks.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, no.
How are you? Hey, y'all. I'm good, Marquis.
Yep, you sound good. Thank you.
Awesome.
Did y'all see that article about how Dreamville produced like $9 million of economic impact for Raleigh? Man, we need to get us a rap festival.
We just had one, I thought.
We were supposed to have Sylvanasso, we couldn't figure out how to make it work.
Well, apparently Sylvanasso had like a live concert in some neighborhood or something.
They did it over in Durham. We just, we couldn't, it was awful. We were trying to make it work.
That's not Jermaine, though. I'm trying to get J. Cole to Chapel Hill.
I didn't recognize you, Pam. Your background's different.
Yeah, sorry, until the sun moves along. I don't have many options here. This laptop's so old, but anyway, we'll work it out.
Also a J. Cole song.
What's that?
Work It Out by J. Cole.
Was it your laptop or work it out?
Well, and before that, there was, we can work it out from the Beatles.
There you go.
I'm pretty sure that song is sampled in Work It Out, but I don't really know because that song is old.
Oh, Karen, you are joining us. How are you?
I'm okay.
Karen, Karen is just earnestly praying for a fast.
I'll stay as long as I can.
Jess has got it too, so we're.
Excuse me.
That's better. Had it fixed.
Have y'all heard of rebound COVID? I did not know that was a thing.
After Paxlovid, yeah.
Yeah, I was like, bro, what? How you get COVID from the, like, medicine for COVID?
Well, you don't get it from it, but probably it suppresses, but doesn't completely make it go away. And when you stop taking it, the virus bounces back.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Parker, for that clarification.
Hi, Adam. Hi, Camille. Welcome.
Mr. Searing, you've got a new look there.
Yeah, he does. He sports up.
It's the beginning of summer and.
What is that on your?
I get away with it for a little while, then Mimi puts her foot down, so.
That's a twist. I'm used to men growing it in the wintertime.
We're love. Winter fur versus.
All right, folks, we're going to get started here. I'm going to have to close you out, though, to read the announcements. Welcome, everybody, but we'll just say, welcome tonight to everybody who's joining us for the June 1st. Can we believe it's June? June 1st, 2022 Town Council Work Session. Tonight, we have three items on our agenda. We will start off with continuation on budget discussions. We do have a few updates there and some things to help our manager and finance director come with a final budget for next week on June 8th. We are hopeful to vote on that budget. And then we are going to have a deeper dive into Parks and Rec status issues and those kinds of things. And then the third item is the discussion on the Legion Park. We're going to get an update and walk through the history of where we have come from and what we observe going forward. I know there's a lot of people interested in that topic. We've had some back and forth with folks. This is a work session, though. There may or may not be time for public comment. I hope there will be at the end. But this will not, we're not voting on anything tonight to remind folks that that's not what we do at work sessions. And so there'll be plenty of time for public involvement on all these issues, actually, coming forward. So in keeping with our virtual laws for public meetings, I will collect your name and ask you to say whether you're here, present, whatever works for you, so that we can record that. So I'll start with Mayor Croten Stegman.
Here.
Ms. Anderson is not here. I believe she is down with COVID. She may join us later. Ms. Berry?
Here.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Ms. Miller Fushi?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Searing?
Here.
And the mayor is also here. And let me click, sorry, I'm going to come back to you in just a second, with the rest of the announcements for today. We have a lot going on, even though it's June. And there's a lot of things that start off with Gun Violence Awareness Day is this Friday, June 3rd. And to show our support for common sense gun legislation, we'll be coming together at Peace and Justice Plaza at 12:30 to raise our orange flag and to share a joint proclamation. We'll be joined by representatives from North Carolinians Against Gun Violence and Moms Demand Action, along with several elected officials from Carver and Orange County. Everyone's invited to wear orange for this event, and I'd love if you'd wear orange on Friday for our CCS meeting, which I know is virtual, but to, we'll take a picture to show our support. So we're a friendly reminder to wear orange on Friday. There's a lot of community events planned for this weekend. On Saturday morning, starting at 10:00 AM, the town, along with friends of the Chapel Hill Parks and Rec, will be celebrating National Trails Day at Umstead Park with unique interactive trail experience. And National Trails Day is a wonderful opportunity for everyone who loves our parks and outdoors to join in a day of service and exploration, so please come on out and join us. And then Saturday afternoon, Chapel Hill and Carver are hosting our first annual Pride Promenade in celebration of Pride Month in our LGBTQ community. The walk will begin at Peace and Justice Plaza and work its way to the 140 West Plaza for a social gathering and performances. And there's other events scheduled throughout the month, and we'll be sharing Pride Month proclamation next week at our regular meeting. And you can find out more information on these events at the town website. Looking ahead, we do have a Council Committee on Economic Sustainability that will meet virtually this Friday from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. The agenda will include the state of the office market, financial analysis from our parking services staff and the Downtown Together Plan, along with introducing and talking with Jennifer Kiesmat, who is our new complete communities consultant. And want to say a big congratulations to the UNC Women's Lacrosse Team for capturing the NCA Division One National Championship over the weekend. So all great things going on and celebrations to be had as we look forward to this coming June. I do want to share with you, due to the rising numbers of COVID, and we were talking a little earlier, hospitalizations are actually up amongst folks. We're going to continue meeting virtually through the end of this month. We've been doing this. It works well, and I think just to be on the safe side, then we can take a break from our meetings and come back in the fall together in person is the plan. We will send out any updates and information, but for now, you can plan on the rest of our meetings being virtual and we'll make sure that we announce that back out. Oh, Ms. Anderson did join us, and we did a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Here, apologize for the delay.
You're good. You're good. We're glad to have you with us this evening, so thank you for that. Are there other announcements of things that weren't shared? Ms. Berry?
Congrats to our Diamond Heels, who won the ACC Championship and looking forward to them playing in the tournament.
Great, alright. Ms. Miller Fushi?
Yes, just want to give a huge congratulations to former council member, now a newly sworn-in House Representative for District 56, Alan Boynce.
Yay, that was great, yay. Yeah, alright, okay, anything else? Alright, well, we'll move into our first item on the budget. We'll continue the discussion. I know a couple of you weren't here with us when we had the discussion last week, so Jones will catch us up and share with us what's next steps.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm Reese Jones, Town Manager. Our goal this evening is to put the finishing touches on our budget for fiscal year '23 before the council formally votes on the budget next Wednesday night. As you know, we've had numerous meetings on this budget during the last four months. I formally presented the manager's recommended budget way back on May 4th. Council's had several changes since that first presentation. Onto slide number two, we'll talk about some of those changes. We adjusted the proposed property tax rate. We originally proposed raising the tax rate from 51.4 cents to 51.9 cents per $100 of assessed value. That would have, that raised it up to 51.9 to accommodate the needs in our transit fund. Council added .3 cents to meet the formal request of the Transit Partners Committee, so that .8 cent increase is dedicated entirely to transit. We added an Economic Development Administrative Coordinator position. We removed a Compensation Analyst position. And then last week, we spent some time talking about two sizable requests that we received in the last two months. One from IFC, which is, the request was for $650,000 for all of the local municipalities here in Orange to help, help pay for their needs, which if we use the population formula that we've used for other agreements, that would be about $258,000 for the town of Chapel Hill. And we, council also indicated support for that through $250,000, so we've now included it in our budget. And they've asked, you all have asked us to begin working on an interlocal agreement with IFC. There was also a request of $273,000 from the Partnership to Homelessness to continue with a number of its programs. Council said that you were very interested in funding the SORAD program, which is about $126,000 from Chapel Hill, and that we would be willing to consider supporting the other parts of the, of the requests from the partnership, but needed some more time to consider that into next year and to have some discussions with the county about that and then respond accordingly. So we did factor in on this next slide, the total requests. If you put those two together, based on what we heard from council last week, it's about $384,000. Of course, we need to find a way to, to help fund that plan. So we do have, as part of this budget, a little over $118,000 for new affordable housing or homelessness efforts that we could dedicate to this. We mentioned last week the possibility of eliminating the vehicle replacement addition that we had at $95,400 and then utilizing some of the reimagining community safety task force funding that we've put aside to address issues like the SORAD position, and that's funding at about $55,000. So we do have a little bit of a gap that we're still facing with $115,000. We did discuss that gap last week with council as we were going through this process. We identified several ways of trying to address that because council, as we discussed, the possibility of a tax rate increase on the general fund to close the deficit, there wasn't support for that, so we put forth a few options to consider. Option number one is to allocate fund balance to help cover that $115,000. That would have to be included in our operational budget in future years, beginning in fiscal year '24. We could reduce the funding that we have in our compression fund that we have developed, knowing that we will probably have excess fund balance next year that could be used to address any needs that we have as we're doing a deeper dive in our compression issues. And we could also do the same with our cost of services fund that we set up and proposed to council this year. In both of those situations, I would advocate that once we make a commitment to use excess fund balance there, that in essence, we're making a commitment to include it in our, our budget for fiscal year '24. So we'll stop on this slide and discuss what direction council may want to go in with these proposed options for closing that $115,000 gap. We'll take any questions that you may have.
Are there any clarifying questions before we go to comments and discussion? I know that we've had some small group meetings. I know that our staffs have been talking to each other. I know we've been talking to county commissioners, trying to figure out, this came late and trying to figure out a way to help with issues that we care deeply about, but we also want to make sure that funds are spent wisely and that achieve the goals we're looking for. And so, in a little bit, I applaud the manager, Amy Olin, for looking for ways to help us get there, even at this late time. I will tell you, the county commissioners have not discussed this at length. They're waiting to see what we do since we're meeting first. And they said that there would be time if we only wanted to fund partial things and say it's only for the one year, that would give us time to work through all this for the coming years. So I share that with you, that that may be an option that you'd like to consider, that some of this is done at allocating fund balance one time this year, and then we come and we spend the year working towards answers that get us to the places we want to go. So just for that update, we haven't gotten there yet. Michael?
Yeah, just a quick, well, I hope it's a quick question. As we think about doing an agreement with the IFC, what, you know, how, once, assuming that we pass this budget as, you know, roughly, that includes the 258, what are the next steps in terms of allocating the funding? You know, what has to happen in terms of agreements, contracts, whatever? You know, if Carver says we don't want to play, what does that do to all of this? Or the county cuts it back. I don't want to pick on any particular entity. So do we have to have an ILA or could we have just a contract between the town and IFC to move things forward?
Well, I think I wouldn't want to say exactly how we're going to move forward just yet because I'd like to see where the other municipalities land in terms of their funding for this. I mean, if, if we needed to move more quickly, council's allocated that 258, and we could, we could certainly provide our portion to it. Usually that's done as a reimbursement. You know, the, whoever we're providing funding to will plan out their year, knowing that they're going to get reimbursed for the money, the outlay that they're, they're going to put, put out. And so then we would pay them back. That's usually how we'd work, so that's one of the things that we'd have to work through. We'd also have to have a discussion about, you know, oversight as part of this interlocal agreement as well. What expectations are established? It'll take a while to figure out the interlocal agreement itself. But IFC will know that we've made a decision to put $258,000 to help them fund their needs for next year, and we can, you know, work on, on, you know, the interlocal agreement at the same time, hopefully with all of our partners, and so we all sign on to it. But I think council will send a pretty big message to IFC that we're, that the town of Chapel Hill is supportive of this and will provide some of the funding that they need to cover their needs for next year.
And would an ILA or some other kind of agreement come back to council for approval?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Paris?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about the .8 increase. If we did a .9, what would that do in terms of filling this gap?
That would be about, so about $95,800 roughly. That would be, that could be used to help cover that gap. So if you did the 95, 8, so you'd have, you know, roughly a little less than $20,000 that you'd have to, that we would still have as a gap, that we could probably find a way to, to close that. And that's the current gap that we have with council agreeing to $126,000 for SORAD. If that's the route that council wanted to go.
Okay, thank you.
True.
Other questions or comments?
Do you want, do you want comments and questions?
Sure, now, go ahead.
So I, one comment, just as we move forward with the IFC and working with the county, we do have the issue of kind of, that Chapel Hill gets to pay for these programs twice, right? We pay as county residents with our county taxes. We pay as city residents through our city taxes. So I'm hoping that as we move forward and continue these discussions towards a more permanent funding solution, that we look at that funding formula and come up with something that I think will be fairer to the, to the Chapel Hill taxpayers. So just as kind of part of our next steps, I hope that that happens. And, you know, I don't know that I have a. And, you know, I don't know that I have a, an answer for you on which of the funding streams I would prefer to make up that 115K. I would rather keep tax increases to a minimum. So I think I would rather try to fund it out of an existing pot of money. You know, if we're going to come back in a year and relook at this and have a more permanent, more stable agreement, then I don't have a whole lot of heartburn about using a one-time fund like the fund balance just for this year. Normally, if something's going to be a recurring expense, I want to make sure that we've got a recurring fund for it. But if we're kind of in this halfway stage at this point, so I would be okay with that or either of the other options that you offer.
Yes, and Adam?
Yeah, I, I generally agree. I would like to allocate the funding for this year and not commit to it being a continuing budget allocation, just so we can kind of figure out where we are. I, I also would add that a lot of the, a lot of the positions that we were talking about for the partnership were, were hired as time limited positions. So I think it's really important to reassess, especially as conditions change, which ones, which ones potentially the, the county thinks they want to keep in housing. I know that DHHS has spots for folks. So I think there's a lot of moving pieces that have to be figured out before I would recommend that we would kind of make this a permanent funding allocation. So I think the fund balance makes sense for a one time, so that we can kind of figure it all out. Yeah, I'm very much supportive of the IFC interlocal. I do think that there's a lot to be worked out on the partnership side and also just us thinking about, like, as our housing department needs increase and as we want to, you know, we're going to have gaps in the future, obviously, for, for our creating units. So I also want us to think through what, what it looks like for us to create a pipeline where we can house people and not just kind of focus on the county staffing side.
Thank you.
Adam?
With using one-time non-recurring funding in whatever account to show our commitment to do this, I think there are too many questions, including ones about, you know, budgeting and what happens with the, you know, the other governmental entities contributing for us to commit to a quarter million dollars of recurring funding every year. So I'm happy to, but I'm happy to do it with non-recurring dollars and show our commitment to working out the interagency agreement. And finally, I do not want to do any more tax increases than we're already doing.
Let me get some others that haven't talked yet. Ty, then Camille?
Yeah, on the same boat, I think the option one is preferable out of the three laid out. I think not touching the compression reserve is a, is a wise choice. And then the cost increases don't seem like something that is really within our control. So don't know how we would pull money from that bucket. And then, yeah, I mean, share the sentiments around, we still need time to work out the agreement and all that. So doing the one-time fund makes sense this year with the understanding that, once that agreement is done, we will have to find a, a recurring source to sustain that commitment.
Camille, then Karen?
Sorry, something else clicked. I'm, I'm really torn here. And for us to think that we can reduce our rate as we did last year and move forward with providing for this community, including those who work for us, without increasing at some point, leaves me at a loss. I do want, I do agree with folks that we need to have a better understanding of what this partnership is going to be. And I'm okay with option one of the three that have been presented. I'm, the best for me would be option one. I do not want to decrease our reserve for our staff, for their class and compensation. Do not, absolutely do not. So of the three presented, one is the most palatable.
Karen?
I was actually coughing. I didn't raise my hand, but since you called on me, I will say that I agree with what's been said. I think using one-time funds because of, you know, all the things have to be worked out is, is not a concern for me. And I'm really excited that we've figured out how to, how to fund these priorities. And, you know, there are legitimate questions around the partnership agreement and the roles of each government and, you know, what, what we're funding and why. And so I think, you know, we do need time to work through that. So I'm, I'm, I feel good with this plan.
Paris, then Michael? And Paris, I know you have to sort of be careful around one topic, so thank you for...
Yeah, I'm trying to like do that. And so one of the things I wanted to say is, um, you know, I think we really need to be thinking about our strategy regarding taxes, so that we are not, you know, strangling our abilities as a government. And so that's something that I would like, you know, for next steps, that we're really thinking about that, looking ahead. And, you know, the partnership in homelessness, funding that gap, number one option is where I'm landing as well. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And Michael?
Yeah, first I want to circle back to Amy's point, because I think it's a really important one. I think, and it doesn't apply just to the IFC, it applies to a number of agreements we have, interlocal agreements. And, you know, our, the cost share agreement sounds logical and it's, you know, but it's not. It's, as, as Amy quite correctly pointed out, residents of Chapel Hill, Carbone, Hillsborough pay twice and residents of unincorporated Orange pay once for any interlocal, any of these agreements. And I think that needs to be straightened out. That said, I don't know that will be, it's probably a lot thornier issue than dealing with an ILA for the IFC. So I don't, I would hope that it doesn't get in the way of us, at least, you know, making sure IFC gets what we want it to get for this year. But certainly, that is something that has to be worked on. It's just, it's just wrong, number one. Number two is I also support using, you know, the fund balance. We've stripped out too many things already. I mean, you know, it wasn't one of our options, but I, you know, we're taking out $95,000 from vehicle replacement. And I understand why we're doing it, but it, but it really disturbs me quite a lot, because we know we have to keep investing in that. I mean, it's not a huge amount. It's, you know, two police cars or whatever, but still, it's, it's not, it's, we've got to get better at funding those recurring, not very glamorous, not very, you know, pretty, but very, very important needs. And so, you know, we have, you know, again, the budget for this year looks like it's in good shape, but we really got to have some serious conversations going forward to make sure that we're providing the, the resources that we need for the, whether it's cost of services, vehicle replacements, maintenance of parts. There are just too many things that we keep deferring and cutting out of the budget every year. And we've got to have some serious conversations as a council, as a town, as how we're going to get us to a better place for all of those needs. But like I said, for this year, I'm, you know, I'm quite comfortable with using fund balance. But, you know, there are still, I think, a lot, you know, a lot of conversations not tied to this year's budget that need to be had.
Okay, and I will finish this up here. I agree with a lot of what all of you have been saying. We talked about doing this the one time, so it sort of forces the conversation to have happen. I will say, I think both of these areas need help in funding and coordination and accountability, and we need to be able to work through that as well. I don't want to reward this behavior either. I don't want to be a bureaucrat, but I also don't want to rule behavior that if you throw a big number at us close to our budget decision, that we're going to cave and figure this out. I think we need to do a better job communicating between the county and the towns on working together on these and working together on the budgeting and the accountability. So I do hope that if we pass this budget and move forward, that we communicate those pieces of information as well. But we also talk about, we're doing it out of one-time funding, that we really believe in these programs, that we've seen the, we've seen a great success with the SORAD program. But we want to come to the table and have an understanding of how we're going to work together in the future and what gets us the best results for helping the most people. And so I think that we all have those goals aligned as well. So is that the information you need from us? Is there anything more? I think we were in agreement on the rest of the budget components. Was that...
We, yes, I believe we do have agreement on the rest of the budget. Thank you, council. This is very helpful this evening. Agree on many of the points that you made. We do anticipate on, coming back to the council at a work session in the fall to discuss our five-year budget strategy, which will address some of the very many needs that council members have, have mentioned this evening. So we look forward to having that discussion with you. And thank you for a, a good discussion over the course of the next, or, or the course of the last five months on this, on this budget. It's a good budget. I think it really does. We've been focusing on some issues in the last few weeks, but I think it really does demonstrate the town's commitments to our, our community's values, and I appreciate that.
And we thank you guys for giving us options to reach those goals and, and help us work through them, even in late days of, of this budget process. So no, that was, it hasn't been fun either. And I agree with what Michael said, we can't keep ignoring things that aren't as glamorous too, like replacement vehicle costs and those things too. So we've got to figure out a way. And we have one of the highest combined tax rates in the state. So we've got to figure a way to make these things work in balance, support our values and support community. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's...
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, we can move to the next topic unless...
Yes, I just wanted to, to turn it over to Amy Olin and Sarah Polton, who will do a, a quick update with you all on ARPA dollars and, in advance of coming back to you next week. But we just want to do a quick check-in with you to make sure we're on the, on the right path and to provide you with a little bit of information about it as well.
All right, I'll, I'll pick up unless Amy wants to jump in. But, um, so, good evening, Mayor and Council here yet again, talking about ARPA. Tonight specifically, we want to give you a quick summary of what we got on our letter of intent process from the, that was due just after our last presentation. So we came to you on May 11th. We got some great feedback from you about the town department needs. And now we want to talk to you about some of the community partner needs that we heard on, on, by the deadline of May 13th. So what we're going to talk about tonight really quickly is the letters of intent that we got that are eligible for ARPA spends. So we got a lot that also weren't eligible that you won't be hearing about and some next steps and criteria of how maybe we could move forward with the, the community partner applications. And as we talk about these, I'd love you, love for you to think about, do specific letter of intent, either projects or categories seem most exciting to you? And are the criteria that we're going to put forward, kind of what you had in mind as we go forward with the application process? So by the May 13th deadline, we did receive 46 total letters of intent, of which 35 were deemed eligible in some way for ARPA funds. Of the five ARPA categories, we received letters of intent, all but the premium pay for essential workers, understandably, since these are community partners submitting letters of intent. So I'm not going to walk you through the letters of intent received in each of the four categories. Note that to be ARPA eligible, projects proposed for the support public health and address negative economic impact, that first and second category do have to be COVID-specific, either assist those most negatively affected by COVID or be specific efforts to mitigate the effect of COVID on the community. The other two categories, revenue loss or government services and infrastructure, are both very broad in what they can include. Note also that we did receive a letter of intent from Chapel Hill Pickleball, that since the improvements that they are proposing would be performed by Parks and Recreation, you will see that letter of intent reflected in our presentation next week as part of the town department needs. You, uh, thank you, Amy. So we've received, like I mentioned, 13, or I should say, 13 of the 35 letters of intent fall within the public health or support public health category. This was the first seven of those 13. I've grouped them here because they involve food or personal protective equipment supplies for community members in need, so they all have that in common. You'll see the Meals on Wheels, the Tables Marketplace project and the Farmer Food Share CSA for All are all, appear to be new or pilot projects to test delivering fresh food to those in need in our community. And then the other projects appear to be funding to either prolong or expand normal operations. One thing that you will note as we go through these lists is that a couple of organizations did propose, did submit multiple letters of intent that might be in different categories. So you might see the same organization represented a couple times. Right, so the second part of the support public health category, I grouped together that were either mental or physical healthcare or access to mental and physical healthcare. These all appear to be new or special programs and not just business as usual. And I'd like to note here that Orange County traditionally funds this type of programming under their public health department funding, with the possible exception of the Refugee Community Partnership, which is kind of a new idea that we haven't, to my knowledge, done before. But their ARPA website does not currently include similar programs at this time. They still have about $17 million worth of money that they haven't advertised what they're going to be doing with it yet. So it's possible that it's in the works, but it's not there at the moment. And the town, I also like to note, the town has worked with most of these organizations through the human services funding progress, process, so they're, they're known to us, known partners. So this is the only slide of, for the address negative economic impact kind of category. You can see it's a pretty diverse category, including organization staffing, which we don't recommend funding through ARPA, which we'll talk about later, job training and more language access. The El Centro Hispano project is to provide direct assistance to our Hispanic community members in the form of access to training and other resources. So it's a little unique to this category. So our, we did receive several letters of intent, either directly for building affordable housing or for affordable housing related services, things that we would kind of put in that category for, for upper purposes. This is the first side, which is specific to construction of actual new affordable units. I'm showing you this here, so you have an idea of the needs that are, that our community members put forward or partners put forward. However, we've been working closely with Affordable Housing and Community Connections with Sarah Venus's team and strongly suggest that the Affordable Housing Construction Projects, everything on the screen, go through the same funding process as the Affordable Housing Bond and Affordable Housing Development Reserve projects over the summer. This will allow Sarah's team to determine which funding stream makes the most sense for each project and mean that our partners only have to go through one application instead of a multitude. So we're looking at one streamlined process and then staff will help decide which funding stream makes the most sense. These next projects are affordable housing related, but not actual construction of new units. There are ways to make housing affordable, I should say. We're still looking into whether these two IFC requests that you see, the 460,000 and the 1.1 million, are unique or in addition to what they, what you guys have already been speaking about tonight. And then you'll note several projects here include money for staffing, which we strongly recommend against funding despite being ARPA eligible. And again, we'll discuss that in a minute. And in addition, the town is rethinking its contributions to emergency housing assistance. And so, right now, the Affordable Housing Community Connections team suggested that we maybe pause on considering that for ARPA funds, because they're looking at other ways to work with the county on that. And, and just a side note, that the Orange County has set aside $4.7 million of their ARPA funding for emergency housing assistance, $120,000 for emergency home repairs, $250,000 for longtime homeowners assistance and $55,000 for a landlord incentive program, for a total of about $5 million to projects similar to these on the screen. Gosh, I, the, some of my words got cut off here, but that's okay. So these are programs that we grouped here, because they're traditionally not things the town funds, either through any of our programs. They're usually administered by county government, specifically education-related needs and justice diversion. And Orange County's website for ARPA does indicate that they've put about $80,000 so far towards youth programs. I didn't see anything about justice or diversion. But again, this is a category of things that we wouldn't typically see through our normal human services or CDBG funding. And our final category tonight is Owassa. Owassa actually submitted three total programs. One you saw earlier on the Affordable Housing Related slide. And then the two others here didn't really fit anywhere else. So here we are, loving... And then the two others here didn't really fit anywhere else. So here we are, loving these project names. The first is new infrastructure to explore methane direct power, and the other is to replace private water lines that are leaking water from the Owassa system. Specifically in low-income and otherwise underserved neighborhoods for a pretty hefty price tag. So those are all the projects that we received, the thirty-five projects that we deemed ARPA eligible. And so that's quite a few projects for many more than the million dollars that we set aside of, that you guys agreed. A couple of weeks ago would be an appropriate amount to set aside for our community partners. So in order to narrow that down a little bit, we have. Heard from councils, some interests, and have developed some criteria that we think meet those interests. That could be part of the proposed kind of next process of the application. So going forward, we recommend limiting project proposals to those between fifty thousand dollars and under a million dollars. Those that are clearly ARPA eligible and projects like, unlike human services funding and big, bold transformational ideas, which is something we've heard many times from council. We do not recommend funding staffing or normal operations, because ARPA dollars will only last two years. So if we did fund those things, those community partners would have to pretty quickly turn around and fundraise for continuing funding for those positions. Also, the reporting, what we're hearing from the school of government is that reporting on staffing and things of that nature for third-party entities, meaning nonprofits, for example. Is very complex and. A bit of a minefield. So just, the recommendation is to avoid if possible. So, questions for you guys to consider tonight? What categories are most exciting to you? Are specific projects really exciting to you? Or should we open the application process to, to everyone, or invite a small number? You know, based on the criteria that we just put forward. So that's the presentation for tonight. I know it was kind of quick, but we will be back next week to talk more.
Thank you. Sarah, what kind of feedback are you looking for tonight? Were the, are you looking for the questions you just put up there tonight? Are you looking for them when you come back next week?
Well, we'll definitely need them by the end of the presentation next week, but I recognize it's a lot of information tonight. So if you do have some. Feedback on the criteria we put forward, that would be great. And I'm happy to drop it in the chat, because I know we had it up on the screen pretty quickly. That'd be really helpful. But if you guys also need to think about it more. Totally understand that as well.
Amy Ryan has her hand up.
Yeah, I, I think I need to just see more, more detail and just have a little time to sit with it. And you said there on the slides, there were things that you weren't showing as well. Is that true?
So there were eleven projects that. We could not find an ARPA eligibility angle for them. And we were pretty liberal with our application of ARPA eligibility. And Amy, would you agree with that? So we really tried to put in front of you anything that we think could possibly be put in front of ARPA. Or be, be eligible for ARPA with the possible exception of that staffing. I think our nonprofit partners did a great job of telling the story of why those staff members would be helping people most affected by the pandemic. But when you really get to the nitty-gritty of reporting on what those people would be doing, it, it's gonna be really, really complex to do that, right? And, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, you saw the thirty-five projects that we deemed eligible.
Okay, great. I think the criteria, just on first look, seemed very reasonable to me. I would rather not just fund one big project. You know, there's a lot of really deserving work that covers a broad spectrum here. So I like that you've, you know, that. I, I would like to see, you know, maybe more projects rather than one big one. I think unlike the human services funding, that makes sense to me. New programs make sense to me to, you know, again, we've been talking about transformational things. I think that's a good angle. And, you know, staffing, normal operations are gonna be problematic, then, you know, there's plenty of need and plenty of good things to use it on in other ways. So. So, yeah, so I think your, your basic framework is working for me, and I just need a little time to sit with and, and look at some of these.
Sarah, can I ask what the Farmer Food Share proposal was? Because I was on food council, we couldn't find a way to make. Another proposal work. So I just, I want to know more about what that is.
Yeah, give me one second. So there were three pretty similar projects, so I want to make sure I'm telling the exact right, the exact right story. Let's see here. So they are, they are proposing working with porch and table on a fresh food program. They accept SNAP and WIC. And this, I believe, is to pilot a new way of getting food through food hubs and pantries. I, I am happy to provide their letter of intent, if that would be helpful. It's pretty, it's more detailed than I want to read out here, but. It does, it is one of the newer programs, not just kind of their business as usual. But they are, yeah, they are, it's, it's called CSA for All. And they're, you know, the idea is to deliver fresh food instead of canned, which is.
Yeah, I know, but staple of. The certification was the hard part. We were struggling with most food council. They could, we couldn't get the farmers certified. It was. An onerous and expensive propositions. We couldn't find enough farmers to participate. So I'm just intrigued. So I'd love to see the letter and be able to just sort of dig a little bit more.
Yeah.
I'd love the idea of fresh food. Don't get me wrong with that. We just couldn't, we couldn't figure out a way to make it work. We weren't successful when I was doing that. Michael, then Karen?
Yeah, just a couple of things. In terms of the criteria, one of the things I think we ought to be looking at when we, when we move ahead with getting folks to apply. Is some sense of their ability to sustain these programs, whether, whether once ARPA is gone, right? Even if it's not staffing, all of these look like ongoing things. They're not one-time deals. You know, if you're gonna do. Food from farmers, any of these things, these are things that are meant to go on for years, not just for the two years of ARPA funding. And so I think we need to ask the applicants, at least if they have some sense of how these programs can be made sustainable post-ARPA funding. I think that's really important, because otherwise you just do some good things and then they disappear after two years. I mean, you know, that's, that's. Not ideal from my perspective. Second question is, given the, you know, and I'd like, you don't have to answer this right now, but maybe you and Amy and whomever else can think about this. Is given the, you know, the number of applications you've, letter of intent at least that you've received. Your view of the quality of what we're getting. Is a million dollars enough? In other words, should we be think, you know, do we have so many good things there? That cutting off at a million means that there's a lot of good programs that, that maybe won't get funded. And I don't, I don't have an opinion about that. But so something to think about when you come back next week, you know, do we need to rejuggle the allocations? And then the last thing, which probably isn't your problem. But, you know, we've had a lot of interest in helping people, and Owassa has submitted, rightly so, to help people with their water bills. That's for most people, that's not their biggest utility bill. Most people's biggest utility be is gas and electric. And nobody seems to be stepping up to provide relief for folks who are behind their gas and electric bills. So if we're gonna help people with water bills, it seems like there ought to be some way of also helping people with gas and electric, who I'm sure. Are, you know, in the same difficulty as people with water. So. It's, whether it's through the town money or somewhere else, I'd like to see if we can address that, because I have a feeling it's a bigger need than the water bills.
Just a reminder, we did utility assistance relief for people during COVID. Owassa, though, was stranded with customers, mostly commercial, who no longer are in existence. That's why, and they're an enterprise fund. But we helped other people catch up on private residences on their, on their utility bills in other ways. I mean.
I'm assuming what Owassa is asking for. I could be wrong, since I'm just, I was making an assumption which may be entirely incorrect. But I'm assuming what Owassa was asking for is, you know. Customers, residential, commercial, or otherwise, who need help, not to pay for the bad debts.
The bad debt. That's what they're left, they were left stranded with over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of bad debt from people who no longer existed, accounts that no longer exist.
Is that what they're asking for in this, Sarah?
They're asking to cover some of the bad debt. I don't know they're asking to cover all of it, but.
Oh, I, Sarah, I thought you said that that was for going in to fix the lines, the leak.
They submitted, they submitted three different projects.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, trust me, I've been looking at these. I can see them behind my eyes and I still get a bit confused.
I know we sent monies all kinds of ways. We sent it to Duke Power and the gas company and Owassa for resident, for. Our residents who were behind in their payments.
So just reading back on theirs, just to make sure that this does appear to be for individual customers. So it doesn't say anything specific about kind of the non-existent customers, but they are looking to set up payment plans. For, like, individual customers that have past due balances. So I don't get the impression it's for. Like this restaurant went out of business and they didn't pay their bill, but we can dig more into it.
Yeah, let's dig, because when I talked to the director, that's what they were talking about. And those, those are listed by individual names. You don't have a company sign up for the. Bill necessarily, but yeah, let's find out. They had about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in bad debt that they didn't have existing customers to tag to. Alright, I'm sorry, I got lost here. Karen, then, anyone else got a hand up? Jess?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the. Criteria and. I like the idea of, you know, a big, bold, new. And the example you just gave of the food share is a, that's, that's really interesting, because it is. Existing organizations providing important service, finding a new way to do it. And I think that's really exciting. I like that kind of. Kind of creativity and new collaboration, but I also don't want to penalize organizations that. You know, are. That can document that the service they're providing, the need, you know, went way up during COVID. And they, you know, are serving more people and need more funding to serve more people. And that need may go back down in a year or two. So I'm, I hate when we give you conflicting guidance, because I'm, I'm saying the opposite of what Michael just said. But I, I would not want to eliminate those groups at this stage. If they are, you know, providing a key need and serving folks who were negatively impacted by COVID. And, and that organization can, can show in their application that the need increased and, and how long that they think that need will, will be increased. And. The other. I guess the question, comment is about, you know, housing. Applications, because I think most of them are for existing housing projects, because obviously you can't just throw together a new housing project. They take years and years. So. Just making sure we're not applying that criteria there and.
Yeah. Correct, the affordable housing construction projects would fall under the general government revenue category, which is not specific to COVID.
Okay.
Unlike other programs.
And I guess new doesn't, my last comment is just new doesn't necessarily mean better. Aaron Nelson will help, hate me for this comment, but, you know. Having housing staff for the chamber is less interesting to me, even though it's a new thing than supporting some of the existing work. So. So I like sort of the, the spirit of some of the criteria, as long as we don't apply it too rigorously and, you know, have that kind of. Flexibility, I guess. Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Hey, Jess and Paris?
Yeah. I think, I was kind of thinking, one of the things I was thinking was along the lines, I think of what Karen just said, which is. I think I would like to understand whether folks are kind of responding to pandemic conditions. And then, and then imagine that they won't need to continue, you know, five years from now. And I don't, so I don't want sustainability to necessarily preclude funding, but I guess. I don't know if there's a way to kind of. Figure out. To kind of ask a question about, do you imagine this being a short or longer-term project? And if they say longer term, maybe asking about their plan for sustainability, because I do think there's, there's a little nuance there about. What, you know, what the intention is. So I think that is something that would be helpful. I think otherwise. I do think the. The criteria generally look really good to me. And I, I would need time with the projects to say what's really, really exciting. I mean, they all seem great. You know, we just need. Eight hundred million dollars and then we'll be ready to go with all of them. But. Yeah, I'd need to take a little bit of a closer look at them, but. I also am interested in. I thought it was really helpful when you gave information about what the county is funding in some of these places. So if we could get kind of that, that side-by-side when we're. Making the decisions, like, for example, to me, some of the education ones are really exciting, but I also think there's. Probably gonna be some county funding for education initiatives. So I just don't want to. It's not that we can't both fund things, but it would be helpful to know. Where, what the big categories are, and also what the. Specific agencies are that are getting county or Carboro or Hillsborough funding, for that matter. That would be really helpful. But other than that, I think this is looking really good. And thanks for bringing this back to us and for continuing to refine. And. I know it's a little overwhelming now, because now we have all these good, these good things to fund and they're all a need. So thanks for your work.
Paris?
Great, thank you. Yeah, looking at that fifteen mil need and then the one mil allocation, I really think we need to take a look and see, you know. I don't know. If there was a real rationale as to just the one million. I know that's where we landed. And that's something that, you know, staff had offered to us to think about for allocation. And so. Really take some time, would love for staff to take some time and really think about that one mil allocation, and if we need to increase that. Also, just want to piggyback off of what Councilmember Anderson was saying. Regarding what the county is funding. And what we're funding, not that we can't do both. Because, you know, just looking at something like Freedom House Recovery Center. I know that that is an initiative with justice and diversion, and really falls within the purview of some of the goals we're trying to achieve. Around, you know, reimagining community safety. And so don't want to preclude funding in that way, especially if it directly speaks to some of. Our goals that we're trying to, and would be interested in funding. Really glad to see the different categories, that they're broad and, you know, we're hitting different parts and needs and priorities within our community. So that's really great. And just really excited that we had, you know, a good pool of applicants to put in requests for this money. That's it.
I don't know if I could provide clarification, only because Councilmember Parker and Miller Fushy mentioned. It is the one million, but it is also the two and a half million in affordable housing that are allocated for these community partners. So it's really three and a half million. When we think about that, we kind of separated the affordable housing and homelessness. Initiative projects, because we knew that some of that might be an interest of council to think about some of the projects that the town is already investing in. And so. Those are kind of, they fall on the, maybe a border of, do we allocate for community partners, or do we look internally to some of the projects that the town is running? So there is a larger pool, and of course, we are certainly open to having additional conversations with council about these allocations. Once we have a better sense of the actual applications and the projects that council is interested in funding.
Great, thank you. Oh, and just follow that up with numbers. About five million of the, of the fifteen million is specifically affordable housing construction, which would go through that. Two point five slash Affordable Housing Bond slash Affordable Housing Development Reserve. So. That's one-third of the total. That we got for the LOY.
Sarah, how much was the total with staffing? Like, did you sort of exclude it from the list?
We, if the staffing was related to COVID or serving people most impacted by COVID, you did see it in the list. So the fifteen million does include staffing. But I'd have to do a little bit of math to figure out what of what's left of staffing.
No worries, no worries.
It's a fair amount. I mean, several positions were requested, for sure.
Okay, Adam?
Sarah, could you just clarify a little bit for me? I know that the federal government's allowing.
Sarah, could you just clarify a little bit for me? I know that the federal government's allowing us to take a standard allowance of $10 million for just revenue replacement for, and then it's just any thing we would spend money on normally as government. And so how does that relate to the criteria you set up and you excluded some organizations based on that, but?
Yeah, I'll take a stab and Amy, let me know if I miss anything. So the $10 million, we're kind of calling the standard deduction. The federal government said, you know, for smaller entities that didn't get quite as much money, if you don't want to go through the formula of figuring out what your actual revenue potential loss was, you can just take $10 million and you can put that towards anything your local government has the authority to do in your state. So we kind of conveniently happen to have 10 million left because we've already spent about 650,000 on Revive. So we have about 10 million left. So we're lucky in that those numbers really line up well. So it's really up to us and you specifically, how you want to break down that 10 million. So 10 million, you know, could, could go through to town things and 10 million could go to other things. But so the plan that we put forward has about nine million going towards town departments, including affordable housing and parks and rec and bike, pedestrian, et cetera. And then we suggested one million towards these community projects, which many of which will be not general government services that will have to go through a separate reporting structure.
That's the, that's the difference is these, like when we give it to these specific projects, that has to go through a different, it's subject to different rules, even though we would fund it under the general, we could fund them with our general revenue funds in any other year, right?
That's a question for Amy. It might be a little bit over my head, but with the exception of a WASA, so that's a different category and doesn't have to, doesn't go through the same reporting as the address negative income.
I'm just wondering if there's more, like, it seems like to me that it might be that we don't have, we don't have to meet those criteria, but that seems like more of a legal question than, you know, than accounting question, I guess. So, but that's, I mean, that's just, it might give us enough flexibility that some of these other projects that you were saying, you know, you didn't think qualified, perhaps qualify, but that would be a legal question, I guess, for, so I would just want to answer for that, I guess.
And I think we can definitely follow up on that. And I think what you're saying is right. Technically speaking, yes, if we are using the 10 million under the revenue replacement, as long as we can statutorily carry it out as a government, they could be eligible. And I think it was, you know, our understanding that the priority and the guidance we received from the school of government was really to think about those negatively impacted by the pandemic and connecting that story to that. And I think that's kind of what we've heard from council, the kind of an overarching theme is that we really want to focus on those negatively impacted by the pandemic in some fashion. And so that's kind of the criteria we use. So we can certainly go back and share the organizations that we did exclude and the rationale.
I'd just be interested. Okay, thanks. And I will say, I'll just, my, you know, when we're talking about doing more and stuff, I think it's, there's certainly a part for this funding to go to these groups and you look at the groups, you know, like they're doing really good work and we should be funding some of this, but boy, we, you know, we have an opportunity here and you look around the country, what other communities are doing and they're picking some really big projects and saying, look, we're doing this. So I think there's definitely a spot for this, for what we're talking about here and y'all have been doing great work, but I want to be able to point to something and, you know, we had this big chunk of one-time money that we would not have had before and we have had a couple pretty hard years and this is what we did with it.
Okay. If you have more comments or suggestions or questions, how about you send them via email to Sarah and Amy? You'll get a chance to discuss this at council meeting coming up, but good work and helping us trying to narrow down a wide range. And it's good to have criteria to do that with. So it's not just who's most exciting. And I think that's the wrong way to go. I think we need to say what gives the most relief to the most folks because that's what we asked for, people impacted by COVID. So, and transformational, those two categories for this particular pot of money.
Quick question, what decisions will be asked of us next week? So I can sort of prepare.
I can jump in real quick. So we will be presenting, we'll kind of bring back those town projects you saw three weeks ago now. What is time anymore? So we'll be bringing back those town projects, kind of reflecting back what we thought we heard from you about which projects were most important. And we will probably be looking for a project ordinance so that departments can go ahead and start spending money on some of those critical needs. And then we'll, we'll revisit the allocation to kind of, to the, to the point of the comments that we've received tonight, we'll kind of look back at that allocation, decide whether it's the right one. And then we'll also give you a sneak peek at what the application process could look like and get your feedback on that process and how equity and some capacity building for not local nonprofits could be built into the process.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Let's move along to our next topic, please. We are going to take a deeper dive into Parks and Rec. Again, if you have more comments and things to share, please send emails or call Sarah and Amy. All right, Phil, are we waiting to hear from you?
We are, and we're going to get our screen shared here, I believe.
Okay, welcome.
And there we go. Good evening, Mayor Hemminger, Mayor Pro Tim Stegman and members of the town council. I'm Phil Fleishman, the director of your Parks and Recreation Department. It's a true pleasure to be here this evening to share information about our Parks and Recreation Organization, opportunities and needs. Tonight's presentation consists of 35 slides, which we'll try to move through quickly. And it's our intent to review these in approximately 20 minutes. I'm joined this evening by Atuya Cornwell, our recently hired assistant director of Parks and Recreation, and Kevin Robinson, who was recently promoted to senior manager of park planning and operations. Both Atuya and Kevin will be sharing an aspects of the presentation. And at the end of our presentation, Tyler Steelman, the current chair of our Parks, Greenways and Recreation Commission, will make brief remarks before we open the floor up for council discussion. So tonight we plan to provide you with an overview of our department, kind of a review of some recent successes and wins, and then talk about needs and a look to the future. And then finally, certainly want to have an opportunity for questions and discussion. Our goal with tonight's presentation is for you to be left with a better awareness of all the varied areas covered by Parks and Rec and for you to have a more complete understanding of the operational and facility needs that we have. So first we'll cover departmental information. And we're guided by a vision and a mission statement, which you can see here on your screen. Our department's divided into four divisions, business operations, park and landscape maintenance, recreation and planning and project development. Over 50 regular and well over 100 hourly program support employees comprise our operation. The number of program support staff grows substantially this time of year as we're bringing on staff to staff camps, pools, et cetera, and run youth programs. So it really wouldn't be possible to provide all of the services that we do in our community without the support and dedication of these talented team members. Showed in the center of the screen here is our management team, management and leadership team in Parks and Recreation. And I'd like to acknowledge members of our staff team who are viewing this presentation tonight in the audience. Thank you for all that you do. Like all town departments, we create an annual business plan and it helps to provide focus on key projects and initiatives that we'll accomplish each year. In developing our business plan, which you can find included within your council packets, we consider priorities that have been outlined by the council manager, our Parks, Greenways and Recreation Commission, feedback that residents share with us throughout the year, and input from staff within the department. Parks and Recreation has five high level goals, which you see listed here on your screen. The first two, strengthening tree protection and increasing after-school and recreation program access directly aligned with the council's strategic goals. Within each of these high level goals, there are then specific initiatives that we include in our business plan. And there's a diversity, equity and inclusion lens or focus that's applied within each goal area as well. So this next slide gives you some numbers related to Parks and Recreation, our budget, revenue generation, financial assistance, park acreage, et cetera. Thought this might be of interest to you. One thing to highlight is that during our last pre-pandemic year, we offered nearly 1,000 recreation programs, serving over 8,500 participants. The next couple of slides give you a listing of facilities that we manage and maintain. Community parks, neighborhood parks and specialty facilities are listed on this slide. And then on the next slide, the cemeteries as well as recreation facilities are noted. Now, in addition to maintaining these sites, we're also responsible for vegetation, vegetation maintenance along the town's roadways, boulevards and sidewalks and tree care townwide. This is something that many people don't realize. And when you receive concerns about these areas, you may wonder why Parks and Rec often responds to those, and that's because those are functions handled within our department. Now to transition to our next section, celebrating the wins, I'd like to introduce Atuya Cornwell, Assistant Director.
Thank you, Phil. Good evening, Mayor and members of the town council. I count it a pleasure to be able to highlight some of our department's success within our programming efforts. From hosted blood drives to the return to the basketball court, our team has successfully been able to provide a rewarding and impactful recreational experience for our residents and patrons here in Chapel Hill. Although some activities featured in tonight's presentation occurred prior to me joining the department, over the last several weeks, I've had the opportunity to see firsthand the impact our team makes and will continue to make during inspiring quality programming efforts. So with that said, please join me in a brief journey through photos. On the top left corner, pictured are a group of our youth volunteers who assisted with our adopt a trail program. Featured on the top right is our archery program hosted at Chapel Hill Community Center. Our outdoor adventure club continues to be one of the most attended programs and provides many of our participants their first opportunity to hike, go horseback riding and attempt to climb our climbing wall. As you can see at the bottom left, Parks and Recreation serves as a host site for partner agencies when it comes to food distributions, which I've continued to occur on a monthly basis. Collaborative partners include Growth to Life and Porch. These are different from, and in addition to the town sponsored food distributions, which occur on a weekly basis. And it also, in addition, Park and Recreation organizes food and supply giveaways, such as a bookbag and turkey giveaways that have taken place at Harvards Community Center. At the bottom right, pictured is a special town guest that visited Homestead Aquatics Center just in time to hide some eggs in the pool and participate in our annual egg dive. So we definitely want to take the time to send a special shout out to the bunny and appreciate him stopping by here in Chapel Hill. We are definitely looking forward to an exciting summer of day camps at our community centers. Caps begin on June 13th and run through August 19th. As expressed in the top corner, youth will have an opportunity to meet new friends, learn new skills and express those creative abilities they have. The top right picture features students from the University of North Carolina, spending some time with our youth in Northside Gym. We continue to be thankful for all our members, coaches, mentors and event support personnel who volunteer and help us deliver rewarding experiences for our participants and their families. Two examples of volunteer supported programs are featured at the bottom of the slide. Our Winter Youth Basketball League and Special Olympics of Orange County. We safely returned into indoor youth sports this past winter with over 300 participants participating on 30 basketball teams. And we continue to be proud to facilitate athletic events for the Special Olympics of Orange County. A few weeks ago, we welcomed nearly 100 athletes back to the track at East Chapel Hill High School after about being two years or so being away from our friends and their supporters. So it really was a phenomenal day. At this time, we would definitely like to take the opportunity to highlight a sample of some of our key resources and delivery partners who help us to continue to inspire, create and preserve. An example of this is Dick's Sporting Goods, who sponsors our youth leagues and their championship weeks. On the next slide, I'll share a couple more. Several of these delivery partners definitely help us and have a significant impact in what we do on a daily basis. And some of the work that they have helped inspire will be shared through tonight's presentation. At this time, I would now like to introduce Kevin Robinson, who serves as our senior manager of planning and park operations to highlight some recent park improvement projects. Kevin?
Thank you, Atuya. We have pictured here several of our recent park improvement projects. The top left picture is of the Bullen Creek Greenway Extension beneath Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. It's now a scenic two and a half mile long continuous pedestrian and bicycle friendly path that is 10 feet wide. The top right picture is of the drainage work we did at Ephesus Park Tennis and Pickleball Courts. We used two thirds bond funds to perform an engineering study. The study determined that the major problem was water making its way underneath the courts and then surfacing through the cracks in the courts. We added drainage along the course to redirect the water. Later this year, we will resurface the tennis courts at that facility. The playground pictured on the bottom right is Burlington Park Playground. At both Burlington Park and North Forest Hills Park, we received much needed improvements with Pago funding within the Parks and Recreation Budget. And the final picture is another example of improvement projects completed with Pago funding. This one is one of several projects we completed in the cemeteries. With all that being said, we'd like to thank and recognize council for its allocation of small project funds, such as through the Pago program, as this funding is crucial in supporting these kinds of projects throughout town and at our facilities. Not pictured here, but another improvement and enhancement program that we want to highlight is our arbiculture or tree care program. We are proud to partner with the Friends of Chapel Hill Parks and Recreation on our annual Arbor Day celebration and our fall tree planting. So continuing with park improvement projects, the photos on this slide depict impacts that volunteers and partners have had, including new public art, newer refurbished trails and the Gene Stroud Community Rose Garden. Parks and Recreation currently has two very successful ongoing adopted trail and adopt a park initiatives. One running at Booker Creek Trail and the other at the Legion Road Open Space. Both have resulted in the removal of large amounts of invasive plants, the planting of hundreds of native trees and general aesthetic improvements that have been well received. Volunteers are crucial, crucially important to our overall success and our impact in the community.
So now that you've heard about our recent successes, our next two sections highlight departmental needs with this one focusing on select facilities and amenities that were identified within the department's 2013 comprehensive plan and which have not yet been realized. Now, it's important to note that there are also needs identified within the greenways and mobility and connectivity plans that have not come to fruition, but we're not highlighting those trail and greenway needs in this particular presentation. So as I mentioned, the next few slides will have a sampling of the facility related needs from that plan. First, building a new Parks and Recreation Office Building. Parks and Recreation Offices are expected to be incorporated within the new municipal services center. However, a point to consider is where the popular community play studio will be able to relocate when this occurs, as it's not included within the current plans for the MSC and also operates out of the Parks and Recreation Administrative Building on Plant Road. It could potentially move into a new community arts center that's noted on this slide. One new community park or a park that's 20 to 50 acres in size and designed to serve households within a half to three mile radius was highlighted as a need in the comp plan. Specifically, a community park is needed in the eastern side of Chapel Hill in an area that is generally considered north of Estes Drive and east of Fordham Boulevard, 15501. Also, there were identified needs for new neighborhood parks and expanded skate park and the creation of new sports facilities. There's a sampling of the sports facilities that were identified listed here on this slide. There was a recommendation to have six new tennis courts by 2022. Pickleball was not large or popular in the area at the time, so it was not referenced in the plan. But we did want to make a note of it here. Several years ago, in order to address growing pickleball demand, the town repurposed two tennis courts in order to develop six pickleball courts at Ephesus Park, reducing the tennis court inventory by two. We see adding both new tennis courts and new pickleball courts as key needs. And it is also crucial to have additional resources in order to more appropriately maintain the courts that we currently have. Finally, a few other recommendations are noted on this slide. A teen center could be incorporated into one of the new community centers noted as needs from the 2013 plan. Kevin?
So moving on, we'll be looking at the department's current priorities. The Parks, Greenways and Recreation Commission is engaged in setting these priorities. As a department, we collaborate with many town departments in facility development and improvements to include public housing, affordable housing and community connections, business management, transit, planning, public works, the library and community arts and culture. The current capital improvement program includes 72 projects valued at approximately $26 million and would span over the 15-year CIP plan. Note that this figure is only an estimate as recent cost estimates would be necessary for most projects that are included. The next several slides. The next several slides are set up to give you an idea of some of the highest priority needs. Pictured on this slide is a photo of the current condition of the artificial turf fields at Cedar Falls Park. The black you're seeing is the chrome rubber infill with very little green fiber showing. The fiber has degraded over the years due to the extreme amount of play we get on those fields. In addition, you can see one of the many tears in the surface, as the staff member has his hand in the tear in that picture. So other needs at Cedar Falls Park include paving the parking lot and reconstruction of the tennis complex. The current gravel parking lot requires maintenance throughout the year to keep the surface smooth enough not to damage cars. The department recently received ninety percent drawings for the tennis complex and an engineer's current opinion of probable costs, which have revealed a project budget shortfall of approximately nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Also, the skate park that was built in nineteen ninety-nine has become another area that requires constant maintenance and resources to keep it safe for our park users. As you can see in the picture, the wooden infrastructure is failing. Another high priority improvement project is the eighty Clark Pool, where we are exploring options to replace the baby pool that currently gets little use and is in disrepair. Options include a splash pad and a climbing wall in the deep end of the pool. The teen center that you see here in the middle picture is another site with great needs. Located in the basement of the courthouse building downtown, the current site lacks appropriate access, restrooms, and space in order to be effective, full-service teen center. A complete renovation is needed, or the teen center should be relocated to a new, more spacious venue. One possible concept for the area that you're seeing here is the idea of turning it into a creative maker space for teens to create music, art, beat-making, dance, photography, and other related programs of interest. And finally, the repairs that we are doing at Ephesus Course are needed and are buying us several years, but the course there will need to be completely renovated with a new subbase, new asphalt, new fencing, and a more complete site renovation. So now switching over to new construction projects. We continue to work towards expanding Morgan Creek Trail in the southern part of town with the hopes of increasing connectivity for those residents to the university and the central parts of town. The estimates noted here are for all three sections of the Morgan Creek Greenway, and they were prepared in twenty twenty and before the construction industry started experiencing exceptionally fast rising costs for materials and construction. In addition, Parks and Recreation staff is currently negotiating with a firm to execute the splash pad feasibility study, which we spoke to Council about in December. After completing a request for qualifications process, the cost of the study came in higher than anticipated. Understanding that an inclusive playground could also have sprayer-missing features within it, the intent is also to include the inclusive playground within the study in order to determine the most suitable location and design. Other projects include the before-mentioned teen center and a possible pickleball complex.
I'd like to mention some growth opportunities. Within our Recreation Division, we're limited in the number of programs that we can offer by the amount and type of facility space that we have available. Chapel Hill has not added a new community center or gym facility since the construction of Northside Gym in the nineteen nineties. And as mentioned, the teen center is not up to modern standards. Recognizing that there may be ways to utilize other community assets for programming, we are engaged in conversations with the school system in order to determine what additional shared use could look like, seeing that as an important possibility. Also, seeing community gardens as important and impactful facilities, we recognize that they can be best accessed when made available on public land. We're working with Affordable Housing and Community Connections, as well as stakeholders participating at Hope Gardens, located at twenty-two hundred Homestead Road, in order to determine the next steps for that site as Homestead Gardens is developed in the near future. One other key need that I'd like to mention is that of an updated comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan. I spoke earlier about some of the facility needs identified within our most recent plan adopted in twenty thirteen, which was nearly ten years ago. The comprehensive plan's recommendations are seen as essential in providing a roadmap for future facility development, and when current, should help guide key decisions about funding, priorities, implementation, and development. They also position a jurisdiction to receive certain grants. In order to ensure a thorough, valid, and credible analysis with appropriate benchmarking against comparable communities, we envision working with a consultant who specializes in creating these plans to either update ours or develop a new plan. New elements such as an analysis about of the amount of green or open space in town, a programming needs assessment, an examination of tennis and pickleball options, and a staffing level review are all items that we'd like to include within the scope. Other town plans and related plans of nearby jurisdictions will be considered in order to make sure that our plan is complimentary and adds great value. Now, a big question is, we share with you a lot of needs, so the question is always, how do we go about funding these? And this is just designed to kind of be a high-level snapshot of some options here. There are many mechanisms to fund park projects. Many of them are noted on the slides here, and many of these strategies are paid for by taxpayers. User fees and charges also help to offset costs passed on to taxpayers. Currently, Parks and Recreation's cost recovery through user fees and charges is approximately twelve percent overall. The most effective way to address large-scale capital improvement needs, though, is through the issuance of voter-approved general obligation bonds. The last such bond referendum for Parks and Recreation occurred in twenty fifteen. A comprehensive plan would help to identify effective funding strategies and recommended phasing options for the department's varied needs. The phasing plan would align with the town's capital and debt plan and would be developed in collaboration with BMD and the manager's office. Atiya?
Thanks again, Phil. As we move to the conclusion of our presentation, we definitely would like to take this opportunity to share with you some exciting events taking place in the month of June and July, and then leave you with a few thoughts to consider as it relates to Parks and Recreation twenty twenty-two and beyond. This Saturday, June the fourth, we're excited to present our National Trails Day Celebration at Homestead Park and the Chaney Branch Trail, Chapel Hill Parks and Recreation, in collaboration with Chapel Hill Public Housing and the Friends of Chapel Hill Parks and Rec has planned a unique and interactive trail experience, including a guided hike. On Sunday, June the nineteenth, the town will once again collaborate with local organizations from Chapel Hill and Carboro to host the twenty twenty-two Juneteenth Celebration of Harbidge Community Park. To close out the month of June, grab your cardboards, meet us at eighty Clark Pool for a fun and one-of-a-kind cardboard boat race competition. Be sure to register at chapelhillparks.org for that exciting and fun time coming up there. And the month of July is National Parks and Recreation Month. Once again, the month of July is National Parks and Recreation Month. So we invite you to rise up for Parks and Recreation and join us throughout the month of July as we highlight some of your favorite recreational activities. We would also like to invite you to join us for a Parks, Trails, and Facilities Tour. If you have a preference on a date, please let us know. With that said, back to you, Phil.
We are really fortunate to have several advisory and support groups working closely with our department. The Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Commission, the Community Tree Committee, the Friends of Chapel Hill Parks Recreation and Greenways, and the Intergovernmental Parks Work Group. And several of you are involved in these groups as liaisons, and we certainly appreciate your time and efforts with these groups as well. I'd now like to introduce Tyler Steelman, the Chair of the Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Commission, to share some brief reflections with you. Tyler?
Thanks, Phil. My name is Tyler Steelman. I'm the current Chair of the Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Commission for the Town of Chapel Hill. And tonight, I'm going to use this portion to give a brief update on what we're hearing from community engagement through our commission meetings and through conversations with residents throughout the town. And since joining the commission in two thousand twenty, I've been part of a variety of conversations around the future of our Parks and Greenway system. And residents from across Chapel Hill have come to talk with us about expanding our existing programs, fixing facilities that are in immediate need of repair, and to express their thanks to the dedicated staff in our Parks and Rec Department for their work in maintaining our existing facilities and making programs more accessible to as many residents as possible. Over the last six months, those conversations have started to intensify. Residents have been coming to talk to us about a variety of concerns, especially those regarding the future of our park system. And they've been coming from a variety of perspectives, from clubs, from organizations, and different use cases for the existing facilities that we have. And in response to the needs that we've identified in our park system and that residents have been bringing to our attention, back in January, the commission voted to narrow down the list of over seventy projects and the twenty-six million dollars associated with those projects to thirteen high priorities that we believed needed immediate attention for funding. And we used a set of criteria to narrow that list down, including projects that had urgent health and safety concerns, projects that are in spaces that are in high demand or heavily used, and also projects that provided outreach and advocacy to underserved members of our community. We took that list of thirteen high priority projects and narrowed it down even further, following ongoing ARPA discussions to a list of four projects. And the commission voted unanimously to elevate the Cedar Falls Park Synthetic Turf Replacement Project to include funding for an inclusive playground, funding to repair and expand the town's skate park, and funding for programming and improvements at the teen center. Beyond those projects, there are still dozens that need attention, including funding for a comprehensive master plan that will help the department in seeking grants going forward to help pay for some of these existing projects. Many of the projects include ongoing maintenance needs and things that we just need to fix that are existing in our park inventory, but some of them do include expansions and additional programs. There have also been regular conversations with town residents around the future of park space in this town, and it's largely centered around two concerns: the future of park space and recreation amenities more generally, and the inclusion of recreation amenities in newly developed areas of town. The first set of conversations around the future and possible expansion of park space have included things that we have highlighted in our ARPA communications to Town Council. And some of them have also generated enough interest among the community that there have been resident-generated petitions that are circulating. In the fall, we had a petition brought to us regarding a splash pad. And then more recently, a petition regarding the Legion Road Open Space, both of which generated several hundred signatures and continue to be talked about by residents throughout the town. The second concern has been centered around the inclusion of proper recreation space on newly developed properties in town. The commission has been discussing the importance of placing adequate complements of recreational amenities and newly developed properties, and fully supports continuing to have developers either include those recreational components or make payments in lieu so that we can continue to expand our inventory and connect new residents to our existing amenities. We're really fortunate, and we recognize we're fortunate to have a number of private facilities throughout town that provide recreation space to town residents. But unfortunately, not all of those spaces are accessible. The commission believes that we have a responsibility to residents to provide accessibility in our recreation programs and our greenways and our park spaces, and that that accessibility includes both convenience of location and lowering the financial burdens for access. We are really excited about the sort of the future of parks and our continued work with the Town Council on matters related to parks, greenways, and recreation. Anyone in attendance tonight, we welcome to our regular meetings. The time was listed a couple of slides ago. So any members of the town, any residents that would like to come and talk to us about their concerns or thoughts about the future of parks, we would welcome them. So I will hand it back to Phil. Thanks.
Thanks, Tyler. We've also included a slide here reflecting the important work of the Friends of Chapel Hill Parks Recreation and Greenways and Align Nonprofit. We greatly appreciate all of the time and effort of our advisory and support group members. So now, we realize we've covered a ton of information in a short amount of time. So we have some questions here that we're hoping might generate some dialogue. But this is really at the mayor and council's discretion. We will put these questions down in the chat so that we can take our slides down and see everyone. But first, what amenities, facilities, and programs might you prioritize for growth and development, growth or development? Are there any topics you want more information on, knowing that we've given you a little bit about a lot? And then would you be interested in joining the tour of facilities? And if so, would one of the Saturdays in July that we've proposed work for you? July, we're thinking, just because it's National Parks and Recreation Month, we want to invite commission members, members of the public, to come out and see our parks, facilities, and programs. So with that, thank you so much, Mayor Heminger, Mayor Protem Stegman, and members of the council for hearing our presentation tonight.
Thank you, Team Parks and Recreation, for sharing all this information with us. I think it's good for us to get updates on what we have, what our needs are, and where we're trying to go. And it's been a while since we've reviewed all this. So I want to ask first if council members have clarifying questions on anything they saw during the presentation or questions that weren't answered from the presentation, so that we can start with that and then see, move on to comments from there. Were there any clarifying, Michael?
Yeah, and this, I hate to keep beating sort of a dead horse, but it relates somewhat tangentially to what we discussed earlier. How much funding, you know, again, Chapel Hill is within Orange County, last time I checked. Do we get significant funding for any of our parks from Orange County? Or is Orange County's view is that if it happens in Chapel Hill, it's not their problem?
Um, that's a really good question, and I might ask Amy Oland, seeing that you're in the audience, if you have any information on that, or otherwise, we could potentially get back with you. I know that we've collaborated with the county in the past on specific projects. For example, some work at Cedar Falls Park. I know that we collaborate with the county at the Seymour Center with the Department of Aging, and we're in regular communication with the county in terms of at the staff level in regard to our needs. I am not certain of the particulars of any kind of defined streams of funding there. So we may need to follow back up with you on that.
I will say that the, when we've asked, the county has not said, they said they don't fund. We do welcome county residents at our Parks and Rec facilities and our programs. So we do have a partnership in that manner. The county did pay for the artificial turf that's currently at Cedar Falls that needs replacing now, but that was back when we had a soccer bond way back in the day when soccer was really popular for moving forward, and then they built the West Ten Complex. So the county has said that they purchase land for future parks, but they don't do facilities and coordination. And one of the part, future parks on the list, just to remind folks, is the Millhouse Park up off Millhouse Road. It was slated to have six rectangular fields at some point in time. And it's up there designated and purchased to be a park at some future time in life, along with Twin Creeks Park, which is over on the Carboro side behind the Morris Grove Elementary School. But again, county purchased those, but there's been no movement forward on either one of those at this point.
Thank you.
Adam, then Jess?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, either for Phil or Tyler. So the first one is, you know, you all talk to folks in the community about the park system a fair amount. And Tyler, you have people coming to the committee, and I know Phil, you're at the committee too all the time, and you also have lots of other conversations. What's your general sense of what people are feeling about the, you know, with the, how things are going in the system? And, you know, where we need to improve? I know we had that town survey that we did recently where parks and greenways were the number one issue that people wanted us to work on, but I wondered what your direct experience was.
Sure, Tyler, I don't know if you want to share remarks first, and then I can add?
Sure, that's fine. So the conversations that I brought up in my portion of the presentation are certainly two of the larger buckets that I would put conversation in the future of our system, which really is having to do with where are we adding parks, where are we putting new recreation facilities, where are we increasing amenities and access? Obviously, there are a lot of discussions around the Legion Road Open Space, and that is something we're hearing a lot of right now. I mentioned the petition circulating, and our commission also moved on that item at our last meeting as well. And so there's certainly a lot of conversations around that property, but I think that the other thing I'll leave you with here, people are talking about having to leave town to engage in parks and recreation and go to surrounding areas to sort of, to just participate in the types of programs they would like to see, whether that's tennis or pickleball, or people running, biking, open space users. And I think if people are leaving, that's a sign that there's some dissatisfaction in sort of what we have access to and what we're doing and can help point us in a direction of what can we add and how can we better serve the residents we have with the, with the space that we have access to. Phil?
And I'll just add, I agree with all of those points, and I'll just add that, you know, I think folks are generally satisfied, you know, that they come out, they're satisfied with what we have, but they'd like to see more. You know, we get positive comments about our trail network, yet we know that there are lots of places where there could be more connectivity, more growth in that regard. You know, and I think that's just one example. And then, of course, with facilities that we've not been able to maintain at the level at which they need to be, we do receive complaints frequently in regard to the skate park, things at the teen center, the turf fields at Cedar Falls, tennis courts, et cetera. So I would say that I agree with all the points. So I would say that I agree with all the points made, and I think that folks that we hear from, you know, they'd like to have more because people seem to really value the parks and trails system here, parks, trails and recreation system, but they really would like to see more.
Okay. Jess, did you have a hand up?
Yeah, I was just, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I was wondering, I know that Councilmember Ryan has asked in the past about kind of the delineation of what our Public Works does versus Parks and Rec and kind of the upkeep and maintenance of various properties. And I know that, that cemeteries is, as you said, is under Parks and Rec, and then there are other things that, that Public Works is responsible for. I was just wondering, and I'm sorry, I didn't get to read answers to questions today, but I'm just wondering if we have kind of a breakdown and if, to me, this feels, I guess, from what I know, which is not a lot, it feels a little bit like we were just doing things the way we do them because that's the way we've done them. But, but I'm just wondering if y'all have recommendations of, of better ways to kind of allocate resources or use those different departments to do various upkeep around the town.
I think that's really a great question, and I'll kind of start a response, and then Kevin, you may want to add because you work most closely with Public Works. But we do have a great relationship with our Public Works Department, and we are in close communication with them on a variety of needs and issues. Specifically, they work with our indoor recreation facilities, maintaining the building systems. For example, I think you've heard about the Desert Air HVAC system that's a need at the Aquatic Center. That's a project that they manage because it relates to one of the building systems at an indoor facility. We work and collaborate with them on things like paving projects, whether it's trail paving or restriping at parking lots, things of that nature. Some of the utility infrastructure we work with them on. For instance, lighting within parks, we work with them, and also Duke Energy, depending on what it is. But, you know, really, we, when it comes to kind of what we do and maintain, a lot of the recreation-specific infrastructure, we would be responsible for maintaining. So within an indoor facility, for example, bleachers and goals and equipment that we have there, Parks and Recreation maintains that. We support the custodial services within our facilities through a contractual service. And then also, you know, when it comes to outdoor facilities and facility development of recreation-specific facilities like tennis courts or splash pads, that would fall to Parks and Recreation to lead. I will say, in addition to Public Works, we collaborate closely with the planning department, specifically transportation planning, on the planning, design, and construction of things like side paths, greenways. So that's another related collaboration in this whole Public Works, Parks and Rec mix. But I would say in general, our staff teams work really closely together and communicate, and I feel like they have some of the same struggles with resources as we see in Parks and Recreation. And Kevin, I don't know if you'd like to add anything to that.
Yeah, definitely, and Phil had a great answer there. But in the broadest terms, the Park Maintenance Division and Parks and Recreation, a staff of twenty staff members do all the vegetative management within town. So when you think of the right-of-way mowing and cutback of trees for sightlines, you know, that's something you may associate with Public Works, but that's something that's housed in the Parks and Recreation Department. But then again, cemeteries, the landscaping around Town Hall, the police station, some things, again, you may not associate with us, but we do as vegetative management throughout town. And then, of course, we have athletic fields, parks, cemeteries, you know, all the things that you do associate with Parks and Recreation as well.
Yeah, so that's like horticulture, turf care. As Kevin mentioned, the mowing, weed eating, those sorts of functions that happen at parks, they happen along the sides of roads. And those are things that we do handle. And we work closely with Public Works, like in winter, winter storm response and things of that nature. You know, our teams collaborate very closely there as well.
Yeah, and I would like to echo that as well. Our relationship with Public Works is fantastic. We have, you know, a bench, artistic bench that we're collaborating with Arts and Culture and Public Works to help get it installed and performing just a ton of work in-house within the town so that we're not contracting that out. And, and Public Works is always ready to jump in there and help us with, with stuff of that nature.
Yeah, and I, I didn't mean to imply, and I actually know about the great, I don't know about all of it, but I know about the great partnerships that you all have with the other departments. So I hope I wasn't implying that that wasn't the case. I guess, like, when I think of parks, I don't necessarily think of cemeteries, but I, I do in Chapel Hill, but I'm just wondering, I, I guess maybe another way to ask the question is, what do surrounding communities tend to do in terms of those public rights of way, keeping up cemeteries, like a lot of that kind of horticultural maintenance that you've been talking about? Is that something that traditionally is done by Parks and Rec departments elsewhere?
I have found at different conferences and conversations that, yeah, it's surprisingly more common than you would think. And at the end of the day, it's a lot of the same equipment. It's, it's the mowers, the weed eaters, the blowers, you know, it's fertilizing the grass at the cemetery. You know, it's stuff like that that is all relatively the same work, just kind of a different scale, whether it be an athletic field or an open cemetery or something of that, or a right-of-way right on the side of the road. It, it still requires the same equipment.
Okay, so is it fair to say that you feel like it's reasonable and it makes sense? Or that it's good economies of scale, how those things are handled right now? Or, you know, in your ideal world, are there things that would be delegated differently between the departments?
I think from our perspective, it's, it's handled well, just because we collaborate and communicate so well. I would add, though, that, you know, again, with more resources, there's more we could do in regard to right-of-way maintenance, tree care, things of that nature. But you probably hear that from a lot of different areas in town as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Paris and Amy?
Hi, Phil, just wanting to get an idea on fees and entrance fees and all that kind of stuff, just like, you know, what are the strategies on determining those fees? Have you found that they've created any barriers, anything like that?
So that's a great question. We do have an adopted fees and charges schedule that our commission reviews each year, and then it comes forward to the council, I believe, as a part of the budget process. We've not made any real significant changes. We've made some additions of some fees in the last few years, but we've not made any really significant changes. So what we propose to do is do an internal analysis in the next fiscal year of our fees and charges to take a look at what other providers in the area are doing, and also taking a closer look at our cost recovery in certain areas. I know that I gave you kind of an overall cost recovery figure, but we'd like to take a closer look there and then come up with some recommendations. Along with that, I think it's crucially important that we examine our financial assistance program to make sure that we're not, by changing any fees, that we're not setting up more barriers to access because I think that that works against what a community recreation provider should be doing. When we returned to indoor operations from the pandemic, when we reopened Open Gym, for example, we eliminated the Open Gym fees that we had in place for youth because we felt as though, and had heard from some youth after I, after I started, that that was creating a barrier. We'd also heard from staff. And so we felt it was really important to eliminate that fee, which we did. It was not a significant source of revenue, and we've been getting positive feedback from that. So I think that particularly with our youth, looking at ways to further reduce barriers to access is going to be important. Our financial assistance program, as it's set up right now, households can qualify for up to a ninety percent reduction in fees for many programs. However, we don't have that set up currently for contracted programs, and I think it's important that we move towards establishing that structure for contracted programs as well, knowing that we can't do everything within-house resources and really nor, nor should we. So, you know, those are some things that we would look at moving into the future because it's kind of a balance of, in my opinion, a balance of how could we potentially recover more costs, more of our costs, when and where it makes sense to do so? Because that can conceivably help to support our operation at a higher level while not pushing out or creating a barrier for access for those that may not be able to afford things. So it also comes down to having a balance of free and fee-based programs, I think. And so we really want to look at that through an internal analysis, and I'll also share that as a part of a comprehensive plan, that's a piece that we want to get some engagement with the community through that as well, through a consultant. So I think that's a really great point, and it warrants a deeper dive on our part.
Thanks. Amy, then Karen, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to do a quick follow-up on Jess's point on the budgeting and operational issues and all the different hats that you guys have to wear. I think whatever works operationally, I think you guys are doing a good job there. My concern is just to be able to see it in the budgeting as it gets reported out. So I don't, you know, if I look at your total budget, I can show that to someone, and then I could say, wow, you guys spend a whole lot on Parks and Rec, you know, this is really great. And I think, you know, you've got all you need. But if I can show that X percent are really going to maintaining, maintaining trees in parking lots and doing right-of-way and all that kind of stuff, that, that will kind of let me realistically look at what are, what we're spending on recreation, what we're spending on facilities. So, you know, just to understand exactly what our investment is and if it's enough for a community of this size. So again, operationally, whatever works with you guys is great, but just for, for our information as we go into the next budget cycle, I'd like to find a way to kind of report on it maybe a little bit differently so I can have a better understanding. Thanks.
We'll, we'll certainly make a note of that and work with BMD on a process for that.
Be great.
Phil, I was going to ask, do you ever take a look at what other communities are putting out their Parks and Rec bonds for? I.e., Raleigh's getting ready to do a huge one, Cary just finished one, Durham's doing one. Just what kind of things they're looking at improving or changing? It's fascinating to see the differences now that we've experienced COVID and people are looking at mental health issues and engagement opportunities for outdoor, healthier living for everybody. But I didn't know if you ever took a look at those things?
We do as a staff team, you know, we're kind of regularly reviewing that. And certainly, I think when, when we get ready to go back out for a future bond, we would consider whatever our current needs might be at that time, any plans that we've reviewed or have of our own, and considering what some of those things might be. But one thing that we found, particularly during the pandemic, is that, you know, parks were, parks and trails were really a safe space for folks to get outdoors and reconnect with others and get some exercise. You know, we found our trail utilization went up significantly during the pandemic with trail counters that we have. And really, the feedback that we got, and, and just from what we saw anecdotally, was, was that all of that was really the case. And in addition to that, you know, we saw that our recreation centers were kind of repurposed in some different ways to serve the community. So for example, at Hargraves, there was a large kind of mask preparation and distribution efforts. And then, of course, we've looked at food distributions and how those are making use of town facilities differently. And so I think we found that, you know, there was also a great need for providing more community services out of our Parks and Rec facilities as well. And, you know, certainly looking at what other peer agencies in our area, in our region, and also, you know, more broadly, is something that we'll continue to do.
Camille, you have your hand up?
Thanks. I'm glad you saw that because I lost connectivity here. Phil, there are several high-capital improvements that you have here. And I'm just curious, and Mayor, are we seeing just questions? Are we posing just questions now? Are we doing comments as well?
You can circle in with comments because that's next, but I will ask a question after you're done.
Okay, so, um, that I'll save for comments. I'll come back for that. But the, if we, I would love for you, if you're going to share, if you're going to itemize what you do, break out what you do for Public Works, I would love to make sure, and that shouldn't be just responsible to you, but I would love to know, on the flip side, what that breakout for Public Works, what the value is of what they're doing for Parks and Rec. And another question I had, in your presentation, you showed the Stroud Roses, and what was it about Stroud Roses? Was it that you have volunteer day at the garden?
No, we were highlighting our partnership with the Stroud Roses Organization for the development of the Jean Stroud Community Rose Garden, Chapel Hill Community Center Park, and then just they're also responsible for the ongoing care, the funding of the ongoing care and maintenance of that wonderful asset in our park system. So, yeah, we just wanted to highlight our partnership with them.
Okay. When I spoke with Program Officer Carolyn Wells-Pence, she indicated to me that you all were moving, and this was when it was pretty chilly. So this was a couple of months ago in North Carolina, it could be last week. But anyway, it was a couple of months ago, and she said that there was going to be an agreement where your folks would take over management of that, of the outside vegetation and management of the maintenance of that space because there's been some challenges there, and she thought that you were probably better suited. Have you all reached an agreement there? Because I haven't had a chance to talk with her again.
We have reached an agreement there. That's a great question. So basically, because we have folks on staff that regularly work with, you know, landscape contractors and stonemasons and whomever, we've developed an agreement with them where we would basically help facilitate projects that are needed in the rose garden, and they would be responsible for, obviously with a mutual agreement in advance, they would be responsible for still continuing to pay for it. We would just play for more, we would pay for more, or we would play more of a role in kind of coordinating the work to try to help that be a little bit more seamless, knowing that Stroud Roses is not necessarily in the business of, you know, of maintenance per se, but we are together with other town departments. So we did reach an agreement there. They provide a flat sum of money to the town that we then can kind of work off of that balance in a given fiscal year. And if the amount of repairs needed were to exceed that balance, they would be responsible for either paying for or reimbursing the town for that amount. So we were, we were really excited, and I think their board was as well, to be able to reach this agreement. They're also talking about some additional improvements at the garden, such as a new fence and gate that you may have heard about. And, you know, we'll be happy to share more information in the form of an update once that's moving a little bit closer to fruition.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. One of your questions was about a tour of the facilities, and I would think that might work better if you put out a doodle poll to council members. They can check on their calendars and see if there's dates that resonate with folks, if you wouldn't mind doing it that way instead of us trying to figure it out. Is that all right? Council members, does that work for you, for them to send you a doodle? Okay, because I think people are still working out their plans for July, but I think you'll get a, you'll get a better response for doing that. All right. I do want to circle back with comments, concerns, future information you'd like to hear, see, whatever. I will just share with you that I am out on the East Coast here in North Carolina and driving out this way passed through many small communities that had splash pads with the kids out playing in them. Not large splash pads, but splash pads. And it was fascinating to watch and stop to ask, and their town had put it in because they didn't have a pool, and this was a great amenity for families to come to. So I thought that was fascinating, and they weren't big, like I said. So it was just interesting to see that the new wave of new types of things that people are doing all across, well, I'll just say North Carolina because I don't get to see it. I have seen them in other communities as well in other states, but I haven't traveled much in the last few years, so. All right, Jess, then. All right. Jess, then Amy?
Yeah, thank you. I would just, first of all, really like to compliment you and all your staff. Whenever my kids do Parks and Rec furious activities, they really are amazing. They are at or better than the level of anything that I see at, you know, anywhere in the community. So I really hope that you are giving your staff lots of props for the amazing. My son's in T-ball, or, you know, Pee-wee baseball, and Coach Ernie's amazing, and all the kids love him. And, you know, so I think you really, you know, just put on amazing programs for the whole community. And I really think that, you know, it's, they're very accessible and people love them. So thank you for that. I think, I think overall, we just really need to, to, you know, be thinking about what our, what our overall plan is for funding, all the things we need. It's really obvious through the pandemic that and beyond, that people really value these amenities. It's not, you know, they are for everyone. There are places where our community comes together. So I think this is something that understandably, we haven't prioritized as much recently. But I do think we really need to figure out how we're going to keep our facilities in great shape and also look to new, exciting things for the community, so folks can be outside and be healthy and be together. I think to me, I certainly am really, I've been talking about the splash pad since 2015. So I am a big fan of that idea. I think it, not only that, but I think people from all different parts of the community have shown that they're really excited about that idea. I think it's something we absolutely have to figure out how to do. I think it's just kind of a no-brainer. And I think we have some good places where there would be plenty of diverse and underserved communities that could have easy access to something like that, which it's really, you know, I think, like the mayor said, I've seen them all over the place. And, and, you know, kiddos and, you know, of all different ages too, are having a great time. So in in the heat. I also think the inclusive playground could be a nice way. Those two things are both kind of by definition, it is inclusive. It's not a pool. You know, kids with all different types of abilities can can use both. But I think figuring out a way to potentially do, do both, if there is some sort of cost savings there, would be really exciting. I also, I think I'm curious about what level we would have to do a new, a new comp plan at, so that we could be eligible for funding. I know there's kind of a sweet spot of how much we would have to spend to get the kind of plan we need in order to be eligible for, for, you know, federal and state dollars. So I think that would be something that I'm really interested in. And I do think we're gonna have to figure out what a bond will look like, because we just, there's just so many needs, and there's a lot of exciting things out there to do. But I don't think we're just gonna be able to fund it. Some of the new things on an annual basis. So anyway, thank you for all your work, and hopefully we'll get to see some new, exciting and in better condition things coming soon.
Thank you.
And Adam?
Yeah, I have to say, I'm troubled, you know, after hearing these, these reports. And you know, I, I mean, I've said it before, but we did do this town survey, and the number one thing people want us to work on is the parks and greenways. I suspect that's pretty consistent. Our Parks Chair was talking about how he's hearing people are saying they're leaving town to go, you know, some find out recreational opportunities in other, other communities that we don't have here. You know, people consistently come to us, even in the short time I've been here. It hasn't been five years, like, you know, just the same for the splash pad, but talk about, you know, talk about the splash pad, talk about the adaptive playground, talk about pickleball courts, talk about more open space. They keep, they come and talk to us about this, and we don't seem to ever be able to come up with the money to actually accomplish anything. The Parks Plan is, you know, almost a decade out of date. Things have changed. Not just the pandemic and people wanting to be outside, but we have a whole, you know, amazing new bike team league starting in middle school for our kids that kids and parents are all excited about. We've got tons more people hiking. We have a lot of people, a lot of interest in a lot of different things. Pickleball is a great, another great example. Clearly needs to be updated, especially after the, you know, two years of our pandemic. You know, you know, Mayor Henry, you were just talking about the, you know, the Raleigh 270, I think it's 275 million dollar Parks Bond. The mayor over there, Mary Baldwin, she just said a couple of weeks ago, if there's anything we've learned during COVID, it's how important it is for our parks to be there for us. So they're prioritizing that. But where are we? We're, we have a 25-year-old almost rotting wood skate park that's literally falling apart. And we've been talking for a decade of trying to replace it. The splash pad, seven years, talking about doing that. No inclusive playground. We have a plan, no inclusive playground, splash pad, you know, we've been talking about that. Or I think I already said that, courts, we need new courts, we need, you know, new trail system, we need more space, more open space to build this stuff. You know, I think at some point, we need to look to us, you know, it's not what we say. Everyone always says they like parks, especially if you're in politics, but it's what we do. Are we gonna step up and fund this? I think we are missing the boat with the, you know, ARPA funds. We've dedicated some of them for this, but boy, we could really, you know, this is a need that our community is saying again and again and again, for years and years that they want. And we're just not doing it. So, you know, I don't, I think the Parks Staff or Parks Staff does an amazing job. I think our, the, I'm amazed that the dedication of the Parks Committee and the folks who are still hanging in there and trying to push us to doing that. And I think we need to respond and work harder. And where the funding comes from is up to us, but we've got to do something about it, because there's clearly a community need here.
Okay, Amy, then Karen?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. And I was privileged to see a presentation this this fall, when I joined the Parks and Rec Commission as liaison. And just they really did a deep dive of all the different departments and all the things they do, which I hadn't realized, just how much they do to keep our community healthy in really broad ways, and how many community services they provide. So they do an awesome job. And they really showed me how much, and COVID showed me how much they're part of the resilience infrastructure of our town. You know, both for people being able to get out, to be healthy, to especially during a pandemic. They're also helping with green space and our environmental resilience. They're a big piece of that. So just do an amazing, amazing job for us. Some of the questions you had for us, I'll try to touch on those. The facilities and amenities for future development. I support the Parks Rec Greenway Commission recommendations. I think the turf field has to be done. That gets so much use. And then after that, it was the inclusive playground and splash pad combo. I think they recommended that those two be put together, as Ms. Anderson was talking. They're a natural fit. It may mean some redesign from the Cedar Falls Park Plan, if it had to locate in another place to accommodate the splash pad. But I think that's a, I think that's a winner. It would give us, let us show something big from our ARPA dollars, and it's very broadly inclusive in the community. So I think that would be great. My wish list is always greenways. I just think for, in terms of bang for a buck, we get environmental preservation, we get transportation, we get recreation. So I think they're amazing. Next year, the state has declared that it's the North Carolina Year of the Trail. I don't know what you guys are thinking about to celebrate that, but I think that needs to be a big deal in this town. So however, whatever I could do to help with that, but I'm really excited that the state has has recognized that. It would be nice if they would recognize it, and it's more funding too. Maybe that, maybe that will happen at some point. In terms of fees and programs, I guess it would be really helpful to see what, I mean, I don't have kids, obviously, in summer camp these days. It would be interesting to see how competitive our fees are. And as Jess says, you guys are running a great program. And for the parents who can afford that, I think, you know, it should be competitive pricing. And then obviously, we want to make sure that it's inclusive enough, so that we're using some of that money to make sure that kids who can't afford it are participating at the same levels as well. So just, I think, just as you said, you were gonna do some analysis on that, and that'll help us understand it better. The whole pickleball issue, they've agreed to fundraise. They were, when they came to present to Parks and Greenways, they were talking about they committed to fundraising $400,000 for a pickleball complex. They talked about how the kids are doing it in schools now. It's all ages. It's a, it takes you an hour to learn. So it's a very low investment in skills. It's a low investment in equipment. I don't think that that it's going to be part of this cycle of ARPA funding and what we're doing right now. But I think on the horizon soon, we need to figure out how to make that happen. It's really popular in this town. And I think it's only going to get more that way. And in terms of the Parks Master Plan, I think we just need to look strategically. I know I've seen some figures. I don't, it was in the $200,000 or $300,000 range that some of these master plans can cost. And I know that the the advisory board has had discussions about how much, how much do we spend on planning? And how much can we plan incrementally and use some of that money on programs? So just to, you know, keep that conversation going for what we need to do. But thank you for all we do, for all you guys do. It's just, I know that I used to have coffee with colleagues before COVID, and now I go on walks. And I've seen some really awesome places. So thank you.
Okay. Karen, then Paris, then Michael?
Yeah, first, I just want to add my thanks and admiration, Phil, for the work you and your department do. Yeah, just as I've watched the listener's presentation and reviewed the materials, a few days ago, I just was reflecting on the role that Parks and Rec have played, you know. I grew up here, so just every phase of my life, as a kid, as an adult, for my own kids, just whether it's camps or classes, or the facilities is just so important. And my internet's bad tonight. But anyway, just such an integral part of the community. And the way that you work with volunteers and collaborate with other organizations is just really impressive. So thank you for what you do. I wanted to just comment on in terms of the priorities and the timing and the how we approach the, the new comprehensive planning. It seems like this, the timing would be good to align sort of future parks planning with the all the housing and LUMO work we're doing and the visioning work. It seems like having a a follow-up from that visioning work as part of that is identifying, you know, spaces and needs across the community to then work to put together a plan that includes an assessment of, of needs and gaps and interests across the community. So it seems like that timing, and I don't know exactly what timing that would be, but collaborating with housing and economic development, I think, would be really helpful in terms of looking forward. And I would really like that to guide kind of our our prioritization. I mean, I think we can all share what our personal hobbies and interests are. And, you know, I love that the Cedar Falls soccer field is on the top of the list, because my, can play soccer, but that's not, you know, a policy decision. That's like, what's good for my kid. So, you know, I think I really appreciate the Parks Commission's prioritization, because there are sort of those urgent needs that I think, you know, we've already set some excess fund balance aside and are looking at ARPA funds. And so having sort of what, what should and can we do as quickly as possible? But then from there, and I, you know, I really like the idea of the inclusive playground and splash pad together. You know, I also love greenways and think they've served multiple needs. I mean, there's just everything, everything you guys do is great, so it's just hard to prioritize. But I do think that when we look at sort of larger investments and longer term, and it probably will with it, and the data to go together, so that we're, you know, making really data-driven decisions about, about community priorities for the long term. So I would really like to see that kind of timeline presented to us about what that could look like. And I also want to say and appreciate also that, yeah, I do think we should look at our fees and understand, you know, if if they need to go up a bit. And I appreciate that you also very much center equity around that and to make sure if, if our fees, where our fees are now, and especially if they do end up needing to increase, that we are mindful of, you know, the scholarship funds and other ways that we're making sure that everyone in the community can access all our programs. Yeah, so that's, that's my input. Thank you so much.
Okay, I've got Paris, and Michael, then Camille, then Ty.
Great, thank you, Phil. I live right across the street from, you know, one of our community parks. And so I know firsthand the role and the importance in the role that our Parks and Rec play in the lives of community members. You know, our youth really benefit a lot. It, we really provide programming and opportunities for our youth to be able to explore many different things. And I want to, you know, kind of give a little bit of pushback about us not prioritizing our Parks and Rec and not funding it. I feel like it is a priority. And we are listening to the community. And I see all of the hard work that Parks and Rec is doing. There's just a lot that needs to be done. And there are a lot of competing priorities here. And so there's so much, you know, it's not a lot to go on. You know, money doesn't grow on trees, and I really feel like we are trying to do the best that we can as a community. And council is really taking it seriously about making sure our Parks and Rec are, you know, where they need to be. And one of those things we need to be very cognizant of is making sure that we're taking care of what it is that we already have. We have a lot of maintenance needs. And there are a lot of, you know, aspirations that we have on building something new and growing. And, and, you know, remaining, you know, modern and current with our community interests. And so that's not missed on me. But I do think it's important that we have a real strategy moving forward on how we're gonna pay for all of that. Making sure that we're not bringing on new things and not being able to maintain those moving forward either. And so for me, really repairs are so, so important. Definitely want to do the Cedar Falls turf field, you know. That's really important. It really gets a lot of great use. Really glad to see that the Parks and Rec Commission, you know, elevated the team center in their four recommendations. I feel like that's a can been kicking down the road for a long time. And we really need to be making sure that we're investing in our youth in positive ways. Love to see the inclusive playground, which has also been, you know, just kind of sitting on the shelf as well. And still needing to get some numbers around the splash pad and the cost of that. Really want to see the splash pad go through the process and see where we land there, to make sure, again, that we're not adding new things and not being able to maintain them moving forward. And glad to see the pool upgrades for A.D. Clark Pool. I asked my question regarding the fees. Would love a little deeper dive on the strategy in addressing those. I had another question I forgot to ask. I won't ask it here. I'll just follow up with you later, Phil, around the whole gardens update. And, you know, where that current, the current status and structure of that is, and the role that we're going to be playing with the town with that. Forgot to ask that question. I did have it written down, though. And just, you know, opportunities of being able to expand our scholarship programs if possible, especially with inflation. Many families are, you know, tapped with higher gas prices, higher rents, everything's just going up. And so sometimes the first And so sometimes the first thing that gets cut for, for families are kids' participation in programs like this. And so just want to make sure that we are also keeping up with those kinds of needs as well. Trying to see if I'm answering all of your questions, but hopefully turf, teen center, inclusive playground and those pool upgrades. Thanks.
Okay, Michael, then Camille, then Ty.
Yeah, I don't, I'll, I'll take a moment to thank everybody, both for the amazing work you do. And, you know, I recognize that we have a lot of unmet needs and you know, we're behind in our maintenance, but in spite of that, you know, at least in my experience, our parks look great. So thank you for making do with what is clearly not enough. I think, you know, you folks are doing a really remarkable job. And I, you know, as I've gotten to know some folks in our community, I've seen particularly in the context of Hargraves, you know, how some of our community's best leaders have worked in Parks and Rec and made enormous differences in the lives of young people, particularly in our African, African-American community. So Parks and Rec, I think, has played a very special role in this community. And I hope, you know, we can continue to have that role continue. This was, you know, on the one hand, an uplifting presentation, seeing all the great stuff you do and your successes. It was also really very sobering to see what we, what our unmet needs are, you know, how deep they go. And, you know, I don't know how to meet them. And again, I will, you know, I, I don't want to keep sort of beating dead horses tonight. But, you know, we really need to take a hard look at so many of our needs in the fall and really come up with a plan that funds, you know, our parks and, and other things that we need in this community. You know, right now, you know, we have, are on the verge of passing a budget that has a, you know, a very modest tax increase and doesn't have the funds to do many of the things that we all want done. And so we've got to reconcile those two things. You know, we have lived in many ways, I think, over the past, certainly since I've been on council and maybe years going back, it feels like, you know, we've been eating our seed corn and we've got to stop and we've got to find the money to start meeting these needs. Parks and Rec being, you know, at the top of the list, but as we, as we know, there are others. So I think that in terms of priorities, you know, it's certainly fixing things that are seriously broken, whether it's a skate park. Certainly our teen center, you know, has been a continuing source of embarrassment to me for a town such as Chapel Hill that prides itself on being a leader. In so many ways, our teen center is just, doesn't mean any, it doesn't mean any standard. And that, you know, that needs to be fixed. You know, I, I believe strongly that we should be looking at investing in an inclusive park. And if we can do that and combine it with a splash pad, so much the better. I think that would be great. And I, I did want to talk for a moment about the fees. I think that it's really important, you know, again, I spend a lot of time with transit and transit, you know, Chapel Hill Transit. Close to 20, you know, 20 years ago when fare free and of course ridership doubled and that was exactly what we wanted to happen. I'm not suggesting that we eliminate our Parks and Rec fees, but I think we really need to figure out a way to make sure that we're removing any and all obstacles for people, particularly those, you know, the lower economic strata in our community. And I don't know how we do what we do in terms of giving out scholarships, reducing fees, whatever. But I do know that in many cases, not necessarily in Chapel Hill, the process of applying for those kinds of scholarships can be stigmatizing, can be embarrassing. Folks have to show up with documents showing that they don't have a lot of money. And so I hope that whatever we do in terms of scholarships is as painless and as private and is, you know, inclusive as possible so that even if it, very often there are psychological barriers that get in the way of relieving financial barriers. And I'm really hopeful that we can make sure that we're not doing any of that. And then just the last question, I know that every year we, you know, our summer camps are remarkable. We have big waiting lists. Have we made any progress in expanding our facilities, whether through being able to use, you know, school facilities or anyplace else? Because I know that is something that is hugely popular and that, you know, we continue not to be able to meet the demand for it. But, you know, I just want you to know, I take this very seriously. Parks are critical, you know. As a kid growing up in the South Bronx, I kind of lived in parks. So they were important to me as a kid and I know how important they are for kids today. So thanks for all the good stuff you do.
I've let Phil answer. They've been working on the joint use of public facilities with the school system. And, you know, I've been pushing for more summer camps and I do want to applaud our Parks and Rec Department for continuing to push for more summer camp opportunities for our disadvantaged youth. Because y'all do a great job with the camps, but you want to just give us a quick update?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Parker. We have been working with the schools to expand our joint use agreement. We did receive a commitment to be able to utilize SCROGS this summer. However, what we have run into is what you're seeing on the news everywhere. And it was on the Today Show just this morning, this nationwide staff shortage. So we have not been able to recruit a sufficient number of summer camp counselors and coordinators and also to an extent lifeguards to be able to operate at full capacity and even to be able to take advantage of this new opportunity that we had at SCROGS. So what we've done is we have adjusted our numbers that will be serving at the community center and at Hargrave Center up a little bit from what we were projecting in order to take a few more youth off of the waiting list. Our waiting lists are not as large as they used to be. I think that's largely due to the pandemic and kind of what families may be seeking out and what's being provided for them elsewhere. But we do still have wait lists. Our challenge this year though, has shifted from being facility space to being the staffing in order to have the appropriate ratios to be able to expand. So it's something that we're still looking really closely at. We've adjusted some of our pay rates for summer staff to make sure that they're as competitive as we think they need to be, but we're still really struggling there. So if you all know of anyone that may still be seeking summer employment or could help us to get the word out for those listening to this meeting, we are still accepting applications for all of our summer positions and welcome those that have experience or a passion for working with youth or who might want to get certified as a lifeguard.
Thank you. Camille and Ty.
Thanks. Folks, thank you so much for this presentation. And I do want to share that parks and recreation have been a big part of my family's life. My kids are grown now, but I have one daughter who still coaches in the area. I used to umpire baseball. Was really sad you didn't have baseball fields here in Chapel Hill, but we do have needs and then we also have wants, right? I heard needs several times in our responses to you and that causes me to pause. There is a difference. There is a need with that field at Cedar Falls. That is, that is an opportunity that we have benefited from and we need to maintain it. The teen center, that is a need. We cannot keep sending kids down there into those conditions. There are some other things that I don't see as, as great a need. I see them as desires that would greatly enhance our community. We should also remember that we are a small town and therefore we cannot offer everything here. And we are part of a region, the Triangle Region. So it is very fortunate that our members, our residents have a place to drive to. We are very fortunate that our residents have the opportunity to drive. Just today, I drove back from Raleigh to see Ellen Boyne C sworn in and the light came on. Big red light. Found out that it's the death light for my battery. That's a need, folks. Getting to a splash pad is not, and it is something that would greatly enhance our community. I have no doubt. It is something that has been wanted for some time. I have no doubt. It is something that people really enjoy, especially in these hot days that we're experiencing and what is technically still spring. But it is not a need. And so that one, the splash pad is down. The inclusive playground, that has been drawn up and has been on our website for a number of years. If we can get some small sprinkler misting system there, I think that that would be good for now until we can afford a bigger splash pad. And I too spent more time in our green space during the pandemic. That was affordable to me. And it was very accessible. So I really appreciate it. I know that there are connectivity projects that we would like to complete. And I would like to see how we can pay for it, but the ones that I've named, the turf field, the teen center, the need to be repaired. The, the pool, if we're talking about water features, go ahead and fix the Hargraves Park Pool there that you've identified. Don't add a new one until we can maintain what we have. I really, I want to go back to what Councilmember Miller Fushie said, which was we need to take care of what we already have. We do. And what else? I want us to be creative. So I don't want us to limit ourselves. Tonight, that's what I can come up with, but tomorrow I would like for us to see how can we afford all of these? How can we be creative? How can we afford a plan that will get us more? So I'm not saying I don't want these. I desperately would love to have more for the youth, for the adults, for the people who need this. To, but then I think about other needs. And that's why I'm going to stop here. Thank you.
Hi.
Yeah, I will attempt to be brief. The first thing I'd like more information on is the horseback riding. If you could just send that offline, that'd be great. I definitely echo the conversation around fees and exploring or competitive competitiveness around that with equity centered. Some other things I want more information on are best practices around Parks and Rec, you know, how other similar college towns around America, and how much they're putting towards parks, how much open space they have compared to us, things like that, just giving me a better sense of benchmarks and how we compare on those metrics. Because, you know, comparing us to Raleigh with a budget that's 10x bigger than ours and, you know, they've built more housing in the past six months than we have in the last five years is not super helpful to me. Doesn't seem like we're really comparing apples to apples. I echo the prioritization of current maintenance needs and getting what we have up to par rather than before we start exploring these new projects or start investing in these new projects rather. I think the, the turf, which I believe we've already allocated the funding for, the skate park and the teen center sound like good priorities. But the other thing is not just the facilities themselves, but our staffing and service hours for those facilities. You know, for example, in my experience, trying to find a place to hoop indoors in Chapel Hill is, I know Phil, we've had a few emails in exchange about this. It's quite difficult. You know, we have very limited hours and they're all restricted to certain age brackets. So if you're not, so if you're over the age of 18 and you want to go play basketball indoors, you gotta like, I forgot the specific hours, but it's definitely during working hours. So being able to expand those hours, I think will greatly help us increase. And I know with COVID and all that, there's a lot of complications around that, but I look forward to the, the time when we can expand those hours and allow us to recreate more in the facilities we do have. I would definitely second Amy's comment about the Greenways and how they help with the connectivity, the transit, all that good stuff. Big fan of those. And I do like the idea of combining the inclusionary playground with the splash pad and I was supportive of having that be explored as an option in the feasibility study around the splash pad that we were talking about. And I know that that's coming back sometime next year. So excited to see that. So now it's kind of getting to the, the new stuff. And on the idea of combining things, the pickleball complex is intriguing. I'm a big pickleball fan myself. And combining that with a basketball complex would be an enticing combo, I think, for young folk. And I think the last thing that I would also love more information about, you've mentioned that the Community Arts Center was identified in the master plan. More information about our thoughts on that and, and kind of the vision behind that. And then I think the last thing I'll say is echo the, the comments that, you know, this complete communities initiative that we're about to undertake, Parks and Rec is an integral part of a complete community. So I'm really hoping that this initiative and how we move forward will only help us continue seeking out strategic investments on that front. And I think that's all the little notes I had. Yep.
All right. I will wrap us up here. I want it all. I think we could aim for it all. We have a community that does have a lot of needs and wants and desires. But I truly equate Parks and Rec and Greenways and open space with mental health of the community. I'm especially focused on youth programming, more summer camps. We've got to get those systems worked out with the school system. I've been working on that since I came in the door. We have to have opportunities for our youth who don't get to go to those other summer camps and enrichment type things. This is the pathway to help connect kids to community, to help give them options to explore things. And that being said, I, I do think we're going to have to expand programming in different ways. And I will throw out that there's just different kinds of things going on now that maybe weren't in the consideration two decades ago or a decade ago. We're looking over a master plan for Parks and Rec. Pickleball is just one of them, but there's many other types of things. That's why I suggested looking at other communities' goals they were going after as they search out for things. I've said to a lot of you that I would love for us to do a Parks and Rec bond at some point. But we're going to have to know how much the Municipal Services Center is going to cost us before we can put out a bond for that and a bond for affordable housing. I think we need both. Because we won't know what our debt ceiling is going to be until we know how much the MSC is going to cost us. Afraid to say, I'm pretty sure it's going to cost us more than the 32 million that's currently listed there with the way prices are going up. And because we keep taking a long time to make whatever decision we're making. So that being said, what are other ways to project and get things done? Well, we've used fund balance. We've used two-thirds bonds. You didn't mention fees as one of your revenue sources on the chart, but it is one of your revenue sources. I don't think upping fees is the answer, but are there more opportunities for expanding hours places? I don't know. There may be, there may be some things to look at there. So that being said, there's again, lots of wants and desire.
I think you need to turn off your video Pam, you're breaking up.
Pam, we've lost.
But not.
Pam, I think you need to turn off your video.
At the, am I frozen? I know, I can hear. Okay. I, I can hear you all. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better.
Okay, sorry. Well, great. We've looked at anyway. Anyway, I think there's lots of opportunities for coming up with creative ways. I know we're going to have an overage in fund balance. We're going to need help discerning the best way to do this in a fashion that doesn't cause us to overburden the maintenance part of this in a five to 10-year period in the future. So we wouldn't want to put in six new things right now that just wouldn't be feasible with the maintenance things we already have going. So we need to take a look at a timeline and I think that would be a great thing for our Parks and Rec Commission to take a look at as well. Because you don't want to have to replace all those things again and hit this wall of financial strict constraints again. And I want to say thank you to Tyler as well for joining us this evening and sharing Parks and Rec information. And it goes above and beyond the call of duty being chair. We appreciate you spending some time with us as we delve into this subject further. So we can come back to this subject at another time, but I think this was a good discussion. I think we've given plenty of feedback. I hope it was helpful. But we do appreciate you updating us on all. I hope it was helpful, but we do appreciate you updating us on all things going on. And if we have the opportunity for another two-thirds bond or fund balance overage, I'd like, well, we'd all like for you to weigh in with ideas that make sense. And like I said, a timeline for what makes sense as well. So, yeah. All right, Maurice, is that what we needed for this item? Okay, I call people's attention to the time. We have another item to get through this evening. Um, hopefully wrap up. Goals always to be done by nine or nine-thirty, so we'll see where we end up with this one. But we are going to get an update um on the history of the Legion Park and talk about um transitions for the future. Welcome, Maurice.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you all may recall, the town made the decision to purchase the former American Legion property on Legion Road about five and a half years ago. Uh, we completed the purchase in twenty nineteen and then began the discussion with council about the future of the property in early twenty twenty. The pandemic, however, forced us into a holding pattern for a couple of years. But a few months ago, we decided um to start to reengage on the future of this important property at tonight's work session. That decision was followed by a petition that came from five council members to take the next step in determining what the town may do with this uh site. Uh, the petition was referred to the mayor and the manager for consideration. And tonight we are uh providing some uh additional background information on the property and seeking your guidance on how we move forward with the petition. Um, and so we'll keep a couple of questions in mind as we discuss this topic. Um, should staff pursue next steps on potential uses as described in the council member petition? And is the timeline suggested in the petition for staff follow-up for public engagement in a council decision acceptable? And so I'd like to bring in Ross Topkins, the assistant to the town manager, who has served as the point person from the manager's office on this issue. Ross will walk you through um some of the background um in more in depth and um provide you with uh the rest of the presentation. So I'll turn it over to Ross.
Hey, Mayor, it's a chance. I'm just wanted to check in real quick, cause I froze up briefly. And is everyone seeing my, the screen on the presentation okay?
We are now, but it just shut up a little bit ago.
Okay, yeah, sorry, don't know exactly what happened there, but yes, I will, I'll move us through the rest of the presentation, which consists of ten more slides. And I will try to keep it to no more than fifteen minutes and get you to your last discussion of the evening uh by going through an overview of the property and the town's acquisition of the property. Then talking a little bit about the uh engagement efforts and the work in the American Legion Task Force uh in twenty seventeen uh before moving over to the potential future uses and possible next steps from here. So on the uh map on the right of the screen, you can see the American Legion property outlined in blue. The property is approximately thirty-six acres. It is currently zoned R two. The town purchased it in twenty seventeen uh through an installment purchase. Uh, the first installment was the three-point-six million dollars of excess fund balance from the general fund in twenty seventeen. And uh, and then the remainder was paid in installments in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen uh through the issuance of the general obligation bonds that were designated for recreation facilities from the twenty fifteen bond referendum. And there's a little bit more information about the bonds included in the staff report that's on page ninety of your packet. I just wanted to use this map to talk a little bit about the uh the site conditions and constraints on the properties that exist today. Uh, there's currently two buildings on the property. The one in the in the middle of the property is the main building that was used by the American Legion Post Six uh when they owned uh the property, the town is not using it at all right now. There's also a a smaller property on the east side of the uh of the uh of the property that is currently being leased and is used as a dance studio. In between those two buildings, the shaded area is a stream that runs through the property. And the stream and the associated buffer make up about eight-point-six acres of research, resource conservation district. Um, and then on the western side of the property, closer to Legion Road is a pond, which is about three acres. Um, the pond is in in need of some maintenance if it stays in place, um, or could also be completely removed. That would involve a somewhat costly and lengthy process that would uh include a permit being required from the US Army Corps of Engineers and most likely. Um, and then you can also just reference a few of the surrounding neighbors to the property, um, to the North Liberty Healthcare in the Colony Woods West neighborhood. Uh, to the east is Colony Woods neighborhood. Um, south of the property is Ephesus Park, which is another town property and Ephesus Elementary. The meadows and ternary neighborhoods are uh along the western edge of the property. And then across Legion Road is the Europa Center. So when the town purchased the property in twenty seventeen, the council also formed an American Legion Task Force. And the task force uh focused on evaluating possible public and recreational uses that would contribute to a park experience at American Legion. Uh, before the task force had their first meeting, the town also hosted a community charrette um in early April twenty seventeen on the Legion site. And that input from the charrette was then shared with the task force so they could incorporate that uh into their work on their charge. They delivered their first uh report to the town council in June of twenty seventeen, and that report all included a recommendation that the task force uh continue to work into the fall on an additional charge uh where they would focus on developing criteria for evaluating uses and partnerships uh uh in terms of the site's future. So they did continue that work in the fall. Uh, when they got back together, they uh came up with a short survey that they distributed online that they uh used to help gauge public preferences for use of the site. The survey received about one thousand responses, a little less than a thousand responses. The questions were mainly focused on recreational uses, but the survey also did have one question allowed for people to write in uh other uses that they thought should be considered. And about ten percent, a little less than a hundred of the survey responses had write-ins for affordable or low-income housing. And while the task force didn't make specific recommendations about um the future use of the property, they did note that that was something that the council could address uh when considering potential uses for um the property that didn't fall into the category of public or recreational use. And so they delivered their la- their second and final report in November of twenty seventeen. And um that report included their recommended criteria for evaluating future uses on the property. And they stated that they felt these criteria could apply to um any uses, public or private on the property. So I just wanted to share those on the screen here. In terms of the gathering space for everyone, um, the the stress that the space shade appealed to different interests, different age groups, different abilities, and a variety of income levels uh while supporting healthy lifestyles and mitigating impacts by preserving the character and value of the neighborhoods uh surround the property. They also drew attention to a parking strategy that might include shared parking uses on the property. Um, but mainly looking at ways to address um spillover parking from whatever uses were identified uh that might negatively impact the neighbors of the property. I also saw that um frontage on Legion Road as being an opportunity for gateway experience into uh a park or whatever other uses might be in place on the property. And in terms of that public benefit, um, they envisioned, uh, we talked about pedestrian connectivity exceeding baseline or minimum design standards, including incorporating sustainable design features and making the the location something that would really contribute to the town's identity. And so that that wraps up kind of the overview of the property. And so in terms of potential future uses, wanted to briefly touch on the petition as received uh from several council members uh in it by the council a couple of weeks ago and referred to the mayor manager. That petition um asked the the town to look at developing an implementable plan for the future use of the property um by this fall so that uh we could look at a public engagement process and it continued through early twenty twenty-three with the council being able to consider a final plan in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. And that petition is uh included on page one or two of your packet for reference. In terms of the potential future uses, the petition talked about um three specific uses which have been talked about in the past, uh mainly the passive and active recreation use, also affordable housing, as well as looking at um private development that could be compatible with the uses, but also would generate some revenue that would potentially be reinvested into the other uses. And so with that in mind, also wanted to revisit a conceptual drawing that our urban designer came up with in twenty twenty. This was shared in the work session back then, um, just prior to the pandemic. Uh, when we were also looking to answer that question of, is it, is it even possible to to consider three uses on the property? Um, given the space and the constraints that are in place. And um so the the middle portion of the drawing one that has the most color on it um was the the concept of, you know, how we might arrange some recreational amenities on there that would meet um community interests and priorities while still leaving some other space available for additional uses. The the dark green space that's just um to the right of the amenities there is basically the Resource Conservation District area that we, you know, soon will will remain pretty much um as is. And the petition also referenced that um eastern portion of the property and the other side of the RCD as uh something that should be explored as for an affordable housing location. Uh, and then the portion up on the front part of the property, which in this drawings is about nine acres um for that potential private use, which could include middle-income housing um or a commercially used like office space. I just wanted a couple to highlight a couple of other things on the on the drawing here. One is that the the existing pond is not shown on the drawing and the assumption, uh, and the reason behind that is because we're if we're talking about multiple uses on the property, the pond would almost certainly have to be removed. Um, and in this place, though, we expect there would still need to be some kind of a stormwater device. So there, that's what that big shading is there. Um, but also we have to assume that the possibility that a stream would form in the place of the pond uh being removed. And so we'd have to potentially either us or potential um buyer or developer would have to consider the possibility that um that stream and an associated buffer would come into play there. So um, just wanted to highlight that uh to to make sure that it's not coming across that there's potentially a blank slate uh on that front part of the property. There would still potentially be some constraints there. And so getting to the possible next steps and looking at what the the petition laid out or suggested, I think if staff were to move forward on any or all of those options, we would look at the building out those recreation amenities a little bit more in terms of feasibility and dollars. The the conceptual drawing is not something that has necessarily been signed off on it by Parks and Recreation staff or so it's something we'd want to explore further and also try to put some twenty-twenty-two dollars to to help the council in their deliberation. And also in terms of that public engagement to have more information to share at that point. Um, same is true for the affordable housing options that we have done some initial work there, which I think was referenced uh in earlier council meeting recently about the potential to pursue affordable housing. Um, but we would want to do some some additional work at the staff level and probably with some help from one of our consultants to be able to bring back information to the council about with more specifics in terms of units and feasibility and dollars that might be attached to that. Um, and in terms of the the fall timeline, and we probably would look at working with our economic development staff to pursue leads there um on the private development question to be able to get some better information about the number of acres that might be of interest to a private party and maybe be able to put some better information in terms of um dollar amounts of revenue that that might generate for the town. Uh, have that ready for um a council and public conversation in the fall. So with that, I'll just um put those questions back up one more time that the managers started off with uh to the beginning of the presentation. And then just um turn it back over to the mayor so that you all can share any questions that you have um either for me or for some of the other staff members that I think are um still on hand to, I think, that they might be able to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ross. And bring this back, sorry, my internet dropped again, so I missed a couple of pieces there. But are there clarifying questions from council members before we have comments and answers to the questions you're being asked? Any clarifying questions? Not seeing any hands, okay? Do people want to start off with answering the questions? All right, Amy, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I I let me see if my comments cover it and then um they can, they can ask me to clarify anything. So like the first thing I want to say is my email box has been crazy town today. Um, I know everybody is very concerned about this issue and people come at it from a lot of different perspectives. But I just wanted not for us to not fall into the trap of pitting housing against parks and open space. Both are good for our community and we need both for a healthy town. So and I think that this council really appreciates that and understands it, um, and will think thoughtfully about those issues. Um, so in terms of the first request in the petition to sell the land, I think buying this land was a terrific decision by a former council. Um, I don't see any reason why we'd want to sell off such a valuable and irreplaceable resource. Um, I get it, we could use the money for other things. We have lots of parkland we could sell and do things with the money, but we don't do that because you can't replace the parkland when you do that. So um, we always are looking for land for affordable housing. Um, if we sell off that land, we don't have places to put housing. So um, uh, you know, the land is only getting more and more valuable. Um, we couldn't afford to replace it or it'd be very difficult. So I'm um, I I can see an argument for if you sell things off, you can build the park quicker. I think the having land is the more valuable piece. And um, I'm happy to land bank it until we have the money um and bandwidth to develop it in the way that we want to. So um, I think that we should use a site for some combination of park and affordable housing. Um, I think that that was, that would be appropriate. Um, and in terms of the timeline, we're just, we're talking about a comprehensive planning process. We just talked about in terms of Parks and Rec. Looking at at while we do that process, making sure we analyze our Parks and Rec needs, we're gonna be looking at housing needs during that. Um, we're talking about a Parks and Rec master plan process. So I think that we should fold the Legion into that process, let that play out. I don't think it's, neither one of those is on a huge timeline, right? This isn't, I'm not trying to delay anything, it's just we're doing this big comprehensive process. Let's let that work out. And then when that's done, we'll get the recommendations and then we can make a timeline and move on to more specific planning and do that underway. So I, the the twenty twenty-three timeline to me, unless we're all done with the other planning efforts by then, um, that seems too fast. I think we should, I think we should let our comprehensive planning play out. So is that Ross, is that, is that pretty much what you needed?
I did speak to the questions, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jess, and then who's up next? Jess and Adam and Karen?
Yeah, so uh I found a
Yeah, so I fundamentally agree with everything Amy said. I think we have done inner city visits. We've learned the value of land banking and I certainly believe that there should be park and affordable housing on the Legion. But this feels like this timeline feels like it's more political than it is practical, that if we're trying to get something done before the next election or because of previous decisions, then that's, that's never going to be a good way to make policy. I think we are doing complete neighborhoods or how much housing do we need? Huge initiative, which I've personally pushed for, for a very long time. And so I guess it's honestly, I, it's perplexing to me why this would be put to the side of that initiative, that when one of the core tenants of that initiative is that everything is on the table. So not having this be part of how we overall solve problems around housing and needed amenities and all those things just makes no sense to me, especially since we're doing it. I mean, the work is happening. So I guess this to me feels like a, a solution in search of our problem. We're, we're going to do the work. We're trying to do it better than we've done before. We also know that we just don't have the bandwidth of our staff to do these one-off projects while we're asking them to do these big picture projects. I, it just doesn't make sense to me. And I think we are bringing in people who are supposed to be some of the best in the world to help us do comprehensive planning and to get this right. And it's not about just preserving a certain number of acres or anything else. I do know that there's a lot of kind of confusion swirling around the community and this has riled a lot of people up and you know, that's okay, I guess. But it just doesn't make sense, given what the council is already doing to put this off to the side and not have it be part of what we're already doing, especially since we're we are trying to make sure that we include all of our town on property and the entire community in these plans. So taking any of them out of play just absolutely makes no sense to me. So I hope we can just continue with the good planning that we're doing. And I certainly support figuring out what we're going to do on the Legion along with other places, but I guess setting it to the side just makes absolutely no sense to me.
Okay, Adam then Karen?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with us. I think the, you know, the why plan if we're going to take the, you know, sites like this off the map and I, you know, for our green space, we always hear a lot about, you know, we need to, we can build densely, but that allows us to set aside more green space, but this kind of puts paid to that argument if we're, if we're not only trying to up to our density of our building, but also building on our green space. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I guess the first thing I'll say with this is that, you know, this place has always been used as a park essentially, even when the legionnaires had it for so long. And I grew up over there for at least part of, part of my growing up. And I spent playing time fishing in that pond and playing in those fields when the legionnaires weren't coming out with a gun in hand to chase those kids off. But, you know, I think after the town bought it and then neighbors have spent so much time volunteering and upgrading it over there and, and like we were hearing from Phil and Tyler, the taking out the invasive plants and stuff, all the volunteer work that's been done. And then during COVID, people really realized, you know, this is a, a part of town that doesn't have, you know, the kind of parks that's not, doesn't have a southern community park, doesn't have a homestead park, doesn't have a, you know, Cedar Falls Park, doesn't have a Pritchard Park, you know, these are, this is a part of town that really needs that. And the, the other thing I'll say is, you know, let's think about what the folks, we're asking folks around there to, to swallow when we're talking about development and selling off the part of this property. They are looking up at these giant, you know, apartment buildings going up, but which none of them have anything affordable in them, by the way. And even more development coming. The probably the most developed and densest part of town in the last few years, plus just down Chapel Road and other you know, four more developments proposed with thousands more apartments. I mean, we should be talking about how we can make this part bigger, how we can find more green space that we can somehow connect. Or, you know, in, in my view, and to, to move towards, you know, sort of unilaterally selling office at parts of it and developing other parts of it just seems, just seems kind of backwards. And the final thing I'll say, you know, is I talked about the parks bond that Raleigh did and the, and the mayor, they were talking about Mayor Baldwin, talking about how important people realize their parks are. And of course they're a lot bigger than we are, but if we did a tenth of what they did, we would be still ahead of where we are now. And there's lots of towns around the state that are doing a lot more than we are. Just in the last couple of years, Garner has bought 86 acres of open space. They're, you know, they're expanding their greenland park system. Apex, just a couple of years ago, added 96 acres to one of their big parks. Asheville just opened up a bigger urban park in town that they, they found, found $11 million for. You know, it's happening all over the state and, but here we are. And I frankly am a little surprised that we're talking about not expanding, we're talking about getting rid of parkland that people are using as a park right now. And that just seems, seems to me to be the wrong way to go. So I think there's just no way like selling part of it for a Starbucks or something seems crazy. And, you know, when we look at the needs and what we've asked people to do around there, put up with, with these buildings, I think we should be talking about how we can make this part bigger, not like it's small. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, Karen, then who's next?
Excuse me, sorry. Well, um, yeah, it's hard to go after Adam. It's hard not to respond. I signed on to this petition, so clearly I support it. My interest is in moving forward on the planning. Rather than the land just sitting here and not becoming a park, not becoming affordable housing. Yeah, I think there's a lot of things being said about what the plan was originally for this land. My understanding is that this discussion of selling off a piece to recoup some of the costs was, was always the plan for this land from the beginning and discussions that did not involve me before my time on council. And this is one of the first things we talked about when I joined council is, you know, how what are the uses and potential uses for the land? And it, I learned from that process that the task force and the charge to that task force was only focused on park topics. So the report we got on what the community wanted to see was related to parks because that's what they were asked to work on. I remember learning that very early on in my serving on council and remember the meeting where that report was presented and that a lot of, we also had several many members of the affordable housing community and people in the community who need and support more affordable housing also speaking and saying, you know, we, we weren't even part of this conversation. We weren't invited to the table. So I think that's important to to remember about what has happened around the discussions on this. So my interest in this is getting more information rather than talking about it in the abstract. We don't know enough about the land or I don't, I don't think we know about, you know, are there, is there enough usable land to have a park? And affordable housing and sell some off to, to actually pay for the park. We just talked about how we don't have enough money for, for the parks that we, we have and, and the, the goals we have. I don't know for sure that we can do the plan, that plan, but that was the plan that's been outlined and I would like to move forward to get more information so we can so we can come up with a plan that, that works and meets more than, sorry, my, I'm not thinking clearly to the, tonight, but that we have multiple needs that we're trying to meet and, and that's our job as, as a council. And I think we can have a really excellent park here. And that is very important for that community and that part of the community, for that part of town. And for the, the new folks that we are welcoming to the community. I, I do not view the apartments as something to be tolerated. I view them as new members of our community. And there are Greenfield Commons and Greenfield place, I forget the other one, that are all affordable and that are senior housing. And yeah, we absolutely want park space for our existing neighbors, for our new neighbors. And that's, that's the goal here, along with again, the urgent need of affordable housing that we talk about a lot. I think we can meet multiple needs if we can pay for it in a fiscally responsible way, all the better. So, uh, yes, my answers to those questions are yes. Thank you.
Okay, I have Paris then Ty.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to thank Amy for leading with not pitting parks against housing. This is not what this is about, but I'd also like to add that, you know, we also need to make sure that we're not pitting it against our town's growth and development either. You know, the reality on the ground is that community members who are struggling to meet their basic needs or finding housing that is affordable, don't have the privilege to see the American Legion Road property framed in zero sum terms. This is a great opportunity to achieve a number of council stated goals and to build complete communities that are transit oriented and walkable, that provides housing that is affordable and accessible to parks and green space. And what I'm excited about is the potential to build an inclusive community where people of all abilities and socioeconomic status can, can participate and thrive. And so I signed on to this petition for that, for that reason. And this petition is a direct reflection, an iteration of the original resolution. And so I encourage community members to go back and, and look at the resolution, read the original resolution, also go to the archives. You know, I've been able to sit and watch some of the old videos. And it's very illuminating as to, you know, what we are calling for in this petition is exactly what the original resolution is reflective of. And I'm going to end with just saying that my signing on this, onto this petition is not a political move. And I'm putting folks on notice to not ever frame my service or leadership or the actions or decisions I make as, as a political move.
Okay, Ty then Michael then Camille?
Gotcha. Yeah, I think I also appreciate Amy framing the not pitting the housing against the park. I mean, our intention with this is to build not just a park, but a world-class park on this parcel of land here. And signing onto the petition, as Karen was saying, was really putting this piece of land back into the conversation. I mean, there hasn't been any movement related to this parcel for years. I know COVID played a role in that. And as we're undergoing this complete communities initiative, I think one of the principles that Rod laid out in the beginning was everything is on the table. And what we were being told was that from external stakeholders that, that they were being told that this parcel of land was not on the table. So we, with this petition, we just wanted to signal that explicitly signal that this is for sure on the table as a part of all of this work and new planning process that we're going through. And we want to add that back into the conversation so we can see how we can plan to meet all of our community's needs. The housing, the parks, all that good stuff. So yeah, resounding yes to both of the questions posed. Thank you.
Okay, Michael then Camille?
Yeah, so I'll, you know, I mean, I'll answer the questions first since I, you know, signed on to the petition. Obviously I agree with what the petition calls for. And I, you know, give an enthusiastic yes to both of the questions that are posed. That said, a couple of points I'd like to make is number one, you know, it was, and again, things do change. I certainly recognize that. But it was very clear when the council authorized the purchase that for both financial and other reasons, that a part of it would certainly be looked at very strongly to be sold, leased, or otherwise developed to help pay for both the purch, at that time, the purchase. Now the purchase having been made to be used to actually develop a park. Not only can we generate some funding from some of the land and personally, when I looked at the diagram that Mr. Tompkins presented a little earlier, personally, I thought there was too much land there dedicated to sale or development, but those are the things that will be worked out in the coming months. But not only does it give us a good leg up on developing what I hope will be a world-class park, but the tax revenues that will be generated can actually allow us to maintain the park, something that we clearly, as we learned earlier tonight, have been struggling to do. That's, you know, so I think I want to make those two points. I think what, one of the purposes of this petition is so that we can actually get a park and a world-class park. We bought that over five years ago. Essentially, nothing has happened. And it's long past time to actually build something, build the kind of park that our community needs and deserves. And I think this is a way to do exactly that. I think we will learn things from this planning process. It may be that the revenues for, you know, selling leasing land may not be as much as we think, and maybe that will give us pause to make some changes. Nothing is set in stone, but we, right now, all we have is supposition and we need some hard facts. And then the council will then be able to make decisions. We will be able to present our community with rather than a lot of wishes and hopes, but actual plans and facts and numbers that then our entire community can make a decision about and ultimately is reflected by the council's action. One last point, I don't want to go, it's, well, it's really late. One last point, I think actually, you know, the, the timeframe as laid out actually synchronizes reasonably well with the ongoing planning work, you know, the complete communities work. If we need to shift things by a month or two down the road, that's always fine. I think, you know, as I said, I, I certainly support the timeframe, but as we get into the work, if we need to coordinate certain things better, if we learn things, if we discover certain tasks just take longer, you know, then we'll deal with it. But, you know, from, because ultimately for me, the most important thing is getting this right, not getting this fast. But as a starting point, I certainly support the timeframe that's laid out. If down the road changes are needed, then we'll deal with it at that time, but we need to get started. I think the time is, you know, long past. We should, we should have resolved this quite a while ago.
Thank you. You know, I was asked about this park when I was running. So it was political then? I was asked point blank, don't I think that it needs to be, remain a park? And my answer was emphatically no. First of all, it is not a park. So we shouldn't call it that. It is land that we have secured. Some are using it as a park, want to, but it has not been. The second thing is, I said at that time, in front of many people, several people, I should say in a circle, that my priority in joining this council would be to look at opportunities for housing. The beautiful thing about this, this parcel is that it is large. So I believe that it has opportunity for more than housing. More than housing that's affordable to folks who can afford to live in the houses or the apartments nearby, including the affordable homes nearby. It does have the opportunity to meet multiple needs and I think it's worth exploring. I said that then, and I'll say it again now. I have no problems repeating myself. I am very consistent. I was the executive director of Durham Central Park. That is reclaimed urban wasteland. Five acres. It is now a destination. Five acres. It is now a destination. It sits right in the heart of downtown Durham. If we can do that with five acres, we can do quite a bit if we use more than fear to look at the possibilities here. That is what my inbox is filled with, a lot of fear. I am really wondering how people can say that they don't want to provide housing to individuals who are struggling to find it. People with intellectual disabilities, it's one key population that we're looking at here. How can you say you don't want to provide that for them? We're not saying the whole space. That was not the case. That's a need. That really is a need. And we have beautiful land here that we are letting languish for five years. It was said to me recently, why so soon? The MO of this council for some time has been to, let's study it, let's put it on a shelf, let's think about it, let's mull it over. Not today. I said, when I was running, and I guess that was political, that I wanted to change that. When this discussion was raised with me, when this notion, I said, yes, I'm all for it. So my answer to both of those questions is yes. Thank you.
Paris, is there something? Because you've had a chance to speak already?
Yeah, I didn't get to say yes and yes.
That's nice. Thank you. Okay. Oh, it's always interesting going last and hearing everyone else's comments. I will, I I prefer to focus on the areas where I hear the common ground. I do like the sentiment that we're not trying to pit parks against affordable housing. I think we can have both. I I'm hearing common ground on both of that, that people are very interested in making that work. I will say from my own personal viewpoint, I was thrilled when we
Pam, we can't hear you.
Piece of property and said we could take our time to explore what we could do. I'm trying. Can you hear me now? Yes, no? Okay. So, sorry. We're, we'll be wrapping this meeting up shortly. Anyway, there's a lot of housing units that have been developed on this side of town that are continuing to be developed on this side of town. We need some more affordable housing. I'm not sure we need more housing units. I want to hear what our complete communities visioning yields for us before I know the answer to that question. But I see that we can have a lot of things here. I think exploring it is a great idea. If you want to say nothing happened for five years, I disagree. We had a pandemic, folks, and it didn't become a priority during the last two years because we were dealing with other things that took top priority and bandwidth. We had staff working in all kinds of different direction as well. So we are coming back to it now. We can spend some time. I think the timeline is a little unrealistic, but I'm waiting to see where we go with that. And if we can do it right, then I think there's some possibilities. I know it has gotten the community upset that we're talking about this at a work session and not bringing it forward. It will come forward to a public meeting where there'll be time for lots of comments. I am going to say that as we finish up this evening, we're way over time. And I don't think it would be fair to only let two or three people speak on this subject because I wouldn't know how to pick which ones are going to. So I know people are interested in this topic. I advise you to write us, call us. I advise the council members to have a watch the property to please go out and do so. Just so you have a familiarity with this side of town and things going on, just to see it. That's all I'm saying is go see it. I like to walk all kinds of projects we're looking at just to get a better view of topography, layout, connectivity, those kinds of things. So that being said, I do see some common ground here. I look forward to what staff can bring back as far as more information about this. And I look forward to hearing what the possibilities can be when we come back in the fall. So that being said, we have a meeting on Friday morning for economic sustainability. We will see you all then. And a reminder, friendly reminder, if you can wear orange to that meeting, we would appreciate it for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. So thank you and thank you for a good evening and good discussion this evening on many different topics, parks related. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night, all.